Let me go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of October 8th, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Paul.
President.
Councilmember Peacock is absent. Councilmember Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Mayor Hecla.
I am here. Thank you. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is consideration of acknowledgment, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of Proclamation P. 2425-7, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman proclaiming the month of October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Norman. Need a motion to acknowledge or see the proclamation?
So moved.
Have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge or see to the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and then acknowledged or see that the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of October 2024 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Norman. Whereas October is recognized as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, a time to promote awareness of the importance of cybersecurity and to empower individuals and organizations to protect themselves against cyber threats. And whereas it is in our increasingly digital world, the safety and security of our personnel and community information is paramount. And whereas the city of Norman is committed to safeguarding the privacy and security of our residents, businesses, and government systems. And whereas educating our community about the risks of cyber threats, including phishing, ransomware, and data breaches, it is essential for fostering a safer digital environment. And whereas we recognize the importance of collaboration among government, industry, and individuals by defending against cyber attacks and promoting best practices in cybersecurity. And whereas this month serves as a reminder to everyone to take proactive steps to protect their personal information and to stay informed about the latest cybersecurity trends and resources. Now therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Norman, Oklahoma. I urge all residents and businesses to educate themselves about cybersecurity and best practices to take action to secure their digital lives. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rob Grover, IT manager. There it is. Thank you. Oh, you are here.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for this important recognition of Cybersecurity Awareness Month. In today's digital age, security is essential to protecting our personal data, our businesses, even our national security. As we all rely more heavily on technology, we need to stay vigilant and informed about potential threats is greater than ever. Cybersecurity Awareness Month is an opportunity to remind everyone, individuals, organizations, and governments about the steps we can take to protect ourselves and our communities. I would like to thank the city for its continued dedication to fostering of culture of cybersecurity awareness together through education, collaboration, and proactive measures. We can enhance the safety of our digital lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is a presentation of a Medal of Valor to Sergeant David Stevenson. I'd like to recognize Mr. Russ Landon, Oklahoma Association of Chiefs, Chiefs of Police, Third Vice President to make the presentation. Would you join us, sir?
Sir. How are you? I'm Russ Landon, Chief of Police for the Village Police Department. I also serve on the Oklahoma Association of Chiefs of Police. And each year, we receive nominations from around the state for actions performed by brave police officers. And I'm here tonight to present a special award to one of your officers. On October 4th of last year, Detective David Stevenson was working drug interdiction when one of his fellow team members was shot. And due to Detective Stevenson's quick, professional, calm actions, his partner was saved and the incident was resolved. So based on that, I just take great honor in awarding the Medal of Valor to him on behalf of the State Chiefs Association.
Great job. We'll get some pictures. You want to get in here? It's now time for council announcements, and I'll start at Ward 1.
Okay. Don't have many announcements tonight. Sunset Park is a new park in my ward that just opened. It's Norman's first pink park. The grand opening was a lot of fun. My kids loved it, so I encourage you to go check it out. And the only thing else I have is a B Texas, so.
Good evening, Ward 3 in Norman, Oklahoma. I have no announcements tonight.
Councilmember?
Good evening, Ward 4 in the city of Norman. Again, we're coming up on a Second Friday Art Walk from 6 to 9. The weather looks really nice this Friday, so I hope folks will go out and enjoy and support local businesses at our Second Friday Art Walk. Second, I went to the original town site neighborhood cleanup this past Saturday. It was a great event. A lot of people came and they got a shopping cart out of the neighborhood and a bunch of bags of trash. If you are a part of the original town site neighborhood, you can go to sni.normanok.gov and learn more about your neighborhood and future organizing events. If you don't live in this neighborhood, Google Keep Norman Neat and you can sign your own neighborhood up for a neighborhood cleanup. Next is Fall Residential Cleanup. If you have Monday Polycart Service, you missed out, but Tuesday through Friday Polycart Service, your dates are going to be October 5th, October 12th, October 19th, and October 26th. Last, there's a Norman First American Gala celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day. They're reclaiming our voices and telling our stories. And if that is your jam, then at 5:30 to 8:30 on October 14th, 2024, at McFarland Church, you can purchase a ticket and attend that and support that organization. You can find that information at https://onecau.se/6bdv41. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
No announcements this week, thank you.
Councilmember Hinkle?
I have no announcements.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody that this Thursday at 6:30 PM at The Well here in downtown Norman, there is a candidate forum for two of the state House District seats that represent Norman, House District 45 and 46, and Senate District 15, which is also representing Norman. Those three will have candidate forums Thursday at The Well starting at 6:30 PM for anybody that's interested in attending. I also want to further highlight the cybersecurity proclamation. It's something we've talked about here in various city meetings with our city staff in regard to public safety. And many of us think about police and fire, of course, but cybersecurity has really become right on the same level of concern in regard to how our city can respond to emergencies now that so much of our systems are based on the Internet and issues with hacking and cities having ransoms waged against them, services being rendered useless at the moment, traffic lights, different things like that are all of concern. And so the city, I think we will continue to focus resources on enhancing cybersecurity within our city government, our billing systems, our communication systems for police and fire, and services like water, wastewater, and traffic signals. So I just encourage to, as we did with that proclamation, encourage everybody to keep that in mind, the concern about cybersecurity for our city and for yourself personally when you're online. Also want to note a restaurant that opened yesterday on the east side, East Alameda, Casa Herrera, a sit-down Mexican restaurant, authentic Mexican restaurant that opened yesterday, had their grand opening. We hear often that there aren't very many sit-down restaurant options on the east side of town, and so I would encourage you all to consider supporting the ones that are existing over there, including this new one. It's been various restaurants over the years, most recently Mama Veca and Los Dos Amigos for many years before that, but we tried it and it was very good. It was very fun ribbon cutting for that yesterday, so encourage you all to go check them out. And then finally, wanted to thank the organizers in Norman next for the 40 Under 40 Awards. I appreciate being nominated by Councilmember Matt Peacock, and I wanted to congratulate city of Norman employee Laura Hoggett for her nomination in this year's class as well. I was on a flight back to Oklahoma and could not make the ceremony, so I appreciate all of you that were able to be there and accept those awards on my behalf and all the other people that were nominated for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember?
No announcements for Ward 8.
Thank you. The only thing I have to add to that is for people that are wondering what the city of Norman is doing about the disaster relief efforts in Florida, we have a police officer, one of our police officers down there who's a lieutenant who can give them a hand and also learn what other people do in disasters so that we can be more prepared if that happens to us. Not a hurricane, but other things that get us. Hope not a hurricane. Anyway, next item is Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged in one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item 3 through 18 be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items 3 through 18 on the Consent Docket.
So moved.
That a motion and a second? Thank you. Motion on the floor is to place Items 2. Items 3 through 18. Change in my script. Items 3 through 18 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to place Items 3 through 18 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast. The Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 19, a resolution directing staff to terminate Contract K. 2223-56, a service and lease agreement with Food &amp; Shelter Incorporated for operation of an emergency overnight shelter pursuant to its terms. I'll need a, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
A motion to adopt.
Have a motion and second. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
I would like to amend Section 5 from 30 days to 60 days.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and second on the floor to amend Section 5 from 30 days to 60 days. Discussion? Hearing none. Councilmembers, the item on the floor is to amend, is to amend the Section 5 of this contract to be 60 days, not 30 days. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Public comment?
You want public comment? We can have public comment. Do we have somebody signed up for public comment?
No.
All right.
You just need to come forward one at a time. Remember to keep your comments to the motion.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. 60 days is better than 30 days for this proposal, but it still runs a significant risk of possible shelter shutdown over the course of the winter. As the Assistant City, City, gosh, what's your title there, City Manager, said during the meeting that we were all just in a few minutes ago, 30 days was impossible to find a new vendor, and 60 days was going to be difficult. 90 days might be doable. But notice by the time you're stretching that out, you're basically just voting no on this, on the whole thing, even if you amend it. So I want to suggest either take the time off, you know, just not make it a particular outcome, but if you insist on having a number of days there, you should probably go 90 or 120 rather than 60. Thanks.
So just listening to your conversation, so there's no plan and you're concerned about it, you know, having a date that you want to end this by? I'd say 30 days makes sense, but you should postpone it until you actually have something that you're ready to move on. You have nothing you're ready to move on? You're just setting some date so that you have a kick in the pants maybe to do something? That's silly. Just keep it at 30 days, but you should postpone this vote.
Carlena Gravel, Ward 4. So the concern, as you probably are concerned, is it going to operate as a no-barrier shelter during that 60 days? Because it's operating as one now, I guess, without clean-certified security and the appropriate actions that were necessary for that RFP and for that contract. So 30 days, we would be operating as we've been operating for the past year as a no-barrier, but the RFP was out for a low barrier, which was the requirement. So where does that put us as a city? Does that mean we would be operating in 60 days with a contract with no, no security? Thank you.
Chelsea Gravel, Ward 4. Are you concerned to be working with a provider that has threatened to sue the city for longer than 30 days? I know that if I threatened to sue someone I worked for, I would no longer have a job. She's wanting a public apology. She's wanting our city manager, Daryl Pyle, to do an audit on our city auditor. She's wanting many different things. Are you comfortable having this kind of relationship for longer than 30 days? Because in my personal experience, I would be asked to leave my position immediately if I threaten to sue the person who is paying me. Thank you.
Paul Wilson, Ward 1. I don't agree with Dr. Ellis very often, especially as of late, but I was in the same meeting as him just prior to this, and 30 days was seemed impossible, 60 days was okay. I'm in agreeance, 90 days would probably be better, because even if we can get everything situated in 60 days, finding staff, if they're not trained, you're throwing them to the wolves. Every business or every entity that has, hires people, has a training period. So if we do get everybody by 60 days, the extra 30 would give 30 days of training. So I'm in favor of 90 days and just like before, 90 days and that's it. So 90 days is good. Thanks, guys.
Far be it from me to get in the way of, Caleb McGee, far be it from me to get in the way of administration over practicality, but I would like for you to take a look at your calendars and see what 30 days from now is. What month is that? Correct. What happens in November? It starts getting cold.
Okay. Do you have a statement to make, sir?
I do. I do. I'm making it right now.
Ask your statements.
When, if you close the shelter when it's cold outside, people are going to die. And that doesn't, and it doesn't matter if you have bones with food and shelter, if you have beef with anybody, it doesn't matter. Does not matter. People will die. 90 to 120 days is best. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Ruhel. In my experience, just seconding, I guess, the thought about the need for cybersecurity, I hear leaks. What if something happens to the facility? There's, you know, there's weather, inclement weather.
Sir, the question to be asked in this is about the 90-day or 60-day or whatever the.
Yes, Mr. Hecla. If I might could get to the point here. Walmart sells these teepees. Now, how it's just illegal to have teepees in the state of Oklahoma is beyond me, nonetheless, I dare say it's going to be a great expense, and I'm one for shopping locals, so I might just encourage everybody to say thank you for the local businesses yet again. Thanks, Food &amp; Shelter and, and the rest of y'all. So best of luck with the situation.
Thank you.
Michael Blunk, Ward 1. So when it comes to public service provision, right, we always want to make sure that the public, and that means all members of our public are best served. Having such a short turnaround to find a very skilled provider in such a short window is just not feasible, right? I mean, let's be honest. I second what people have already said earlier, at least 120 days or maybe 150 to find like a good service provider, if we can find one, to be perfectly honest. Because when it comes to contracts, right, this is in curb cuts. It takes a lot longer to find mental health providers. It takes a lot longer to find people who are going to have the right mixture of professionalism and care required for this job. And then, of course, if you're trying to add extra services like, you know, contract for, for security as well to whatever kind of shelter we have, that's either going to be on the same contract or a separate contract. So it's not just finding a provider, it's finding multiple people to fill those roles, if I understand correctly, right? So that's, that's going to take time. So, and as people have said, you're going to have winter weather. Last, actually earlier this year, because we're still in 2024, right? Feels like it's not. Feels like it's been a lot longer, but it's one of those years. So earlier this year, I had the opportunity to work with people during that major snowstorm that we had back in January. And I got to see firsthand, A, the professionalism of folks over at Food &amp; Shelter, but I also got to see, you know, how that impacts people. I talked to a gentleman who ended up leaving a burdensheep shelter and then coming back that evening, and luckily he was allowed back in. But when I spoke to him, he had told me that he wished he'd never left because of how cold it was. You know, we had, we had negative 15-degree weather during that week that was operating as an emergency shelter space. And so when we have that extreme weather in Oklahoma, we know that that is deadly. That's not hyperbole, right? That's, that's real. So again, as far as this amendment goes, either extend it to at least 120, or we'll talk more later, but personally, I would, you know, I would say just let the contract go for as long as the provider still wishes to provide it, but I digress. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Sherilyn Denso, and I, property.
Good evening, Sherilyn Denso, and I, property in Wards four and six. It seems to me that the city keeps trying to kick this can down the road a bit, and I have a really hard time spending good money after bad. And I want you to think about that. Seriously think about kicking the can down the road and spending good money after bad. Thank you.
Kim Blodgett, Ward seven. I came tonight just specifically to talk about this. It's just interesting that we find ourselves in this position right now, since I've spoke with a few council members that told me themselves that they would not, absolutely not vote to close a shelter without an alternative in place. So I am going to ask council and mayor, please to vote on at least ninety to a hundred and twenty days so that we can hopefully possibly get someone else to take it over. And I would hate to think, I mean, Norman, my city born and raised here, I would hate to think we're just throwing people out in the cold. So please consider that. Thank you.
Russell Rice, Ward two. Can y'all hear me okay? My voice is kind of going out from yelling at people for the petition. I love it. Anyways, ninety to a hundred and twenty days obviously would be best. To just stop all of this right now would also be best. This shouldn't be politicized. It should be handled already. This is people's lives. Y'all want to kick them out in the middle of winter. Kick them out in the middle of winter, huh? Yeah. It's a real dick move. Have a good day.
Wow. No clapping.
Rob Norman, Ward three. I too believe the amendment has not been proposed for a sufficient number of days. I listened to the earlier meeting on YouTube and I thought that the issue was going to be whether it would be sixty or ninety days, not thirty or sixty. So I would say that whether you're going thirty, sixty, or really even ninety, you're still in a position where you don't have a worst case scenario or a planned situation where you're not in a position where you could be kicking people out in the middle of winter with no place for them to go. Another thing, just to stay with the amendment, that the amendment is missing, that I thought was being addressed in the session beforehand, was for those of you who don't want to kick the can down the road, or for those of you who are concerned that that's what we're doing here, I thought that there was going to kind of be a compromise position that, okay, ninety days or thirty days after we have a new operator in. I don't hear that in the amendment either, and that sort of thing needs to be in the amendment. So right now, you don't have a plan. You don't have anyone in place. You don't have any clause to prevent this being a situation where someone has no place to go in thirty, sixty, ninety days, whatever you do. Now, that kind of bleeds over into the main substantive thing, and I'm going to count on having comment on that, too. But that's my thought, is this amendment is too short. It doesn't have the provision for, okay, we've got to have an operator in place, and if we do, then we can get rid of it in thirty days. So I think the amendment doesn't go far enough, and it's defective on what we do if there's nothing in place.
Rodney Johnson, Ward two. This is the first time I've been to a city council meeting, although I do watch them on YouTube, and I would like to commend the council, for those of us that are YouTube watchers, to be able to participate in our government even though we don't, are not able to come to this room. Now, as far as this amendment is concerned, I too watched the meeting before this one on YouTube, as I always do. I firmly agree with the previous speaker, and what you do here today makes a big difference to people that live in that shelter right now. Now, I've heard in previous meetings that this has gone on for two years. Well, that is your responsibility. That is not for this to come up all of a sudden, and now I know we've been talking about this since midsummer, more or less. And I do agree with the problems that a lot of you on the council have with the current contract and possibly the current operator of that contract. I, I don't know. I'd have to do some more research about that, but I do agree with some of the things that you do want to be put in the contract. But the point of the matter is, what you do here today affects lives, and I don't think that a lot of you really understand that. And I also agree that what I understood from the previous meetings, that we were discussing whether that this be terminated on basically December first or sometime in January. Now, we're discussing something about possibly being, and I understood that there was a split on that. Now, all of a sudden, I come to the meeting, because actually I want to speak on something else during comment section of the meeting, but now I come to this meeting and I find out that you're talking about a December, early part of December period? That is unacceptable, in my opinion, as a citizen of Norman. Like I said, you've had two years to dwell into this problem, and it's, and doing this like it is, all of a sudden, and again, I know we've been talking about it since the summer, but the actual termination is something that's only been going on for, you know, a couple of months now. So I don't know. I ask you.
Sorry. Jenny Spurling, Ward one. Honestly, this is so saddening. Like, we're talking about a mere difference of thirty days to buy all time to find solutions, but shouldn't we just prioritize the people it's serving? Like, this is thirty more nights of fifty-two people without shelter. Like, that is so significant to their life, their health, and like their humanity. Why wouldn't we do both of these things? Continue to house folks for as many nights as needed until you find the solutions that you seek? Doesn't that like seem like the most equitable, the most caring, the most humanizing option for however many parties here? A hundred and twenty days, fine. If we have to somehow choose an arbitrary number based on months of a year, if that's the only option we have, please choose that.
Hello, Miami Windler, Ward two. Okay, so, um, to your comments that, um, this has been going on for a couple of years. We've gone through the different iterations, different possibilities of the different buildings, like the, the one on Berry, and then there's the one on Porter, then there was the whole thing about the hotel on the west side, and now we're talking about Griffin. I kind of feel like, um, maybe you guys aren't really taking this seriously and you're really not working hard enough to try to actually find a solution for this. Thirty days, sixty days is not enough time. Ninety days is still not really enough. I mean, it's still winter. What is the SEC going to think about frozen people? On Main Street. That's it. Thanks.
Christina Owen, Wards four and eight. I am definitely for a longer period of time, if we have to choose that. Many people here have mentioned something more like ninety to a hundred and twenty days is more feasible than something like thirty days. Anyone who's ever had to deal with any kind of transition, even in the business world, even if you're doing a renovation, anytime you're changing hands, thirty days is really not enough time. Sixty days is super tough. So the longer you can go, the better it is for everybody. The better for services. The last thing you want to do is rush something and not do it well. But given this topic, that's kind of been the history of Norman. I know that there have been several misunderstandings, and I think there's been a lot of fuel added to the fire instead of figuring things out. For instance, I keep hearing this issue about not having Cleet certified security. A friend's house has always had Cleet certified security. The exact same people who worked there through the third-party subcontractor still work there and never stopped working there. So there's currently Cleet certified security. It's things like this, we're having these arguments on things that aren't even true. So we definitely need more time to have these conversations and to work out these misunderstandings. And I know it's really easy to have constant back and forth that gets muddled, because just in the last year, we've gone from, we're going to renovate and have a hundred places in the same place, to, no, hold on, we're not going to do that because we might move to Griffin, to, hold on, we might close. All of that in less than a year. How can the staff members keep up with that? How can the guests keep up with that? How can the city of Norman keep up with that? How can you guys keep up with that? It's so easy for these miscommunications to keep happening. And the best way to deal with that is with more time and with level heads. So please keep that in consideration. Please give thoughts to giving as much time as possible on this. Thank you.
Hi. I was going to ask if Anthony Purinton could answer some questions. So my questions concern the sixty-day timeframe we're talking about. Realistically, if the other operator could not take over in sixty days and the city had to step in, what would that process look like? And if we had to hire on some more case managers, because let's say some staff didn't want to go with the city, what would that look like?
So I might, I don't know if Daryl or Shannon might want to answer that in my stead, since they are more of the operational side of things, and I don't necessarily want to, you know, answer incorrectly, because I think you probably have a better idea of that.
So staff's ability to continue the conversation with alternative providers that were on that path.
Would, I was thinking if they were, would we say part-time employees?
Part-time temporary. A thought we had is that we may reach out to other service providers and glean copies of what their job descriptions look like that may accelerate our ability to initiate such a recruitment. And under the assumption that those employees would eventually transition and work for a new provider, but we think we, we could speed up the process.
I would be interested in speeding up the process, and I think that would help the new provider, you know, that might actually help with negotiations with them, to step up sooner.
Yeah, we do believe staffing will be the challenge that they face, too, and that may drive their timetable for their ability to begin operations.
Okay. And then I would just ask about the times the city has run a shelter. It is my understanding that there was winding at the old library location and at Comanche.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So that's it. Thank you.
Let's direct the first question to Rick. How many agencies have we reached out to about maybe taking over this contract?
There have been at least two. I know when we did the initial RFP, it included responses from Food and Shelter and Salvation Army, so they were involved in that conversation. And then there's also been some additional operators that we have discussed this issue with going forward.
Okay. And these operators, I believe Mr. Purinton said last week in our study session, that as a city, we give overabundance of support to the shelter compared to what they see on a, you know, other cities across the state?
My understanding is they did highlight some of what we do that they believed is over and above what the cities that they currently contract with do.
So in, at the same time, these organizations do not want to take over this contract. These organizations we've reached out to, they, they do not want to take over this contract.
They haven't given us a final determination yet.
What are some of the, what do you think is holding them back? Because I've heard that they do not want to operate at this level of security.
In those conversations, what we've heard is the level of security that was proposed in an amended agreement is similar to the security under which they currently operate. And it's just a matter of taking the opportunity through their board of directors and, and just making sure they've vetted the opportunity on their side. So they are working through that process right now.
Okay, so, so if we actually included the security in this contract, if the provider would have said, you know, we, we accept these terms for the security, it'd be a similar contract then?
Similar, yes.
Okay. But this provider, for the last two years, refuses to do this. They refuse to put the safety of these people first. We want to talk about planning. We've had two years of a temporary shelter, and this is, this is where our planning has led us to. So Major Vincent, I know I asked you to put together a few things. I think now might be a great time to go over it.
We're, we're still discussing time.
Exactly. And this is very relevant to how much time we have, because the longer these people, like was brought up in comments, the longer these people have to be inside of this shelter, that's a safety issue. We've already identified that. And that is why we have agreed to cancel this contract. So do we want to increase, do we want to drag out the safety risk for another thirty days, another sixty days? So I think it's very relevant to talk about right now.
Keep it down.
But if you want me to wait, I can wait until, I mean.
If you would, let's settle this issue and then talk about the issues. What I'm, what we're interested in, what we're talking about is the sixty day.
Right. Right. And I want to be no on the amendment, just because, like I said, I think due to the safety issues that we will be pointing out, the calls for service, everything else that has gone on at this shelter in the last two years, subjecting the individuals there to another thirty days is inhumane. We can have people in place to get these people help immediately, and the people that's supposed to be providing help, they're the ones slapping right now. So we'll continue.
My questions are just for clarification from the city manager. So we currently do have another operator engaged. We're just waiting on to find out if it's something that they're willing to move forward with, with us as the city of Norman.
That is correct.
Okay. And in the event that they need more than sixty days to ramp up and our contract ends with the current provider, we do have the capability to run the shelter as a city agency?
What we would do is, depending on what feedback we receive from that provider, begin to work cooperatively to get operational within sixty days. We hope to hear something back before the end of this week as to their board's willingness to expand services into core Norman. In, in that scenario, we do believe we would be attempting to hire basically the same available employee group, whether they were part-time temporary employees of the city of Norman or permanent employees of the third-party operator. So, yeah, we could, we could fill in for two weeks under that scenario as an administrator with employees that would transition to that new operator if that presented itself.
And that's a worst-case scenario?
I hope so. I hope so.
City staff recommended the 60-day timeframe. I'm curious, just for some clarification on what composed, what information was composed to reach the 60-day conclusion?
Recognizing that if council took action tonight, the clock would start tomorrow as a business day, 30 days. We know the board that is considering operating this facility won't take up the matter until Thursday of this week. So, we would expect to hear communications back hopefully Friday. And then, all we are is on a horse riding as fast as we can to get to contractual agreements, and we'd go through similar negotiations with that operator that we had with our current operator in terms of contracts and, and those requirements. They have reviewed the proposed contract, so I think we're at least a little bit ahead of the curve, not starting from scratch in those contract negotiations. But that long lead time would just literally boil down to how quickly could we fly the position, interview, bring those people on board, and make the transition.
And it sounds like we already have some proactive measures that we're leaning towards in that.
Absolutely.
Circumstances? Okay. Thank you.
And along that same question, within 60 days, the current operator could agree to the new contract. A new operator could agree to a contract, or we could, the city, decide that we're going to have to take over running it.
All those options are available to council.
Within 60 days, those would, we would know even before then, I would assume.
I believe so.
We'll know with, within 30 days if the current operator wants to do another contract. Currently, they don't. And so, I would assume within 30 days, we would know again for sure. We should know within 30 days if there is another operator that's going to come forward. And then, within 60 days, we can prepare as a city staff for whatever we may need to do to make sure that the shelter does not close, especially closing in December. I don't think most of us would want to see that happen.
That does not sound like the will of the council. It just comes down to management and administration.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion, the amendment on the table is to amend item five to be 60 days. Am I creating that correctly? To be 60 days. Council members, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have amended section five from 30 days to 60 days passes by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Ball.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Do I need to read the resolution again, or you guys got it? Because I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
You already have a motion?
I've already got one. I already got it. Question from council, got that. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council only, and once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered?
Yes, Mayor, we'll start with Stephen Lett, followed by Alan Hatcher, Jenny Spurling, and John Scamyhorn.
Steve Lett, Ward four. Please vote against terminating this agreement today. You have no plans. We shouldn't be here talking about ending a contract for an essential service when you have no plans, okay? I have been there on the streets in a previous iteration when one of our shelters closed down. That was June 27, 2022. On that day, that was 30 days after y'all received a notice. Y'all received a notice from a good friend of yours, lawyer Sean Rieger, who's here and talks way too much all the time. He, he told you that the landlord for that space didn't have the right insurance. The landlord had screwed up, and they kicked y'all out. You had 30 days. You had 30 days, nothing happened. There was nowhere for our friends to go. I'm just one person that works with Norman Caravans, so what I do at the end of every day is drive folks to where they're going at the end of the day. There was nowhere to go because y'all didn't have a plan. There was no plan. We shouldn't be here talking about ending what is a perfectly fine contract. I completely disagree with everything you all say about how Food and Shelter is operating this. They've built a beautiful community. As our friends here will tell you, who I've seen are signed up to speak, and I am super thankful that we're actually going to hear from people who are being served, the people who actually matter here, the people who should be making the decision. You all should not be making this decision. The Food and Shelter Board should not be making this decision. Our unhoused friends and the workers should be making this decision. You should be listening to them, and you're going to be hearing a lot from them. And you should not terminate this contract. Do not. Otherwise, you're going to be leaving me in the lurch at the end of the day with a bunch of friends trying to figure out where the hell they're going to camp, where the cops aren't going to kick them out. But the cops are going to gum, the cops are going to kick them out. They're going to have their hand on their gun and tell them to move. Our friends are going to reach out to me. They're going to ask me, "Where do I go, Steve?" I'm like, "There's nowhere for you to go here. There's nowhere." Vote no.
Alan Hatcher. Is Alan here?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Alan Hatcher, Ward eight. I work at a friend's house. We were just over there watching this. Shout out to everybody over there watching. Everybody was having a laugh but also just baffled and pissed about how ignorant one of you is, about really everything that comes out of your mouth. So, initially, I was going to come over here and tell you kind of what things are actually like over there and how people will come in and, and once we're doing their intake when they get to bed, they, they will cry, they will weep just out of a sense of relief for, finally, you have something stable. Finally, you, you feel safe. Or about how the second day there sometimes, after just being there for 24 hours, people will slip up and accidentally call it home. They'll say, "Well, it's going to go around here, and, and then I'll just go home." And then, they say, "Well..." Kind of like, like a kid that accidentally calls the teacher mom in school. And so, we'll say, "No, it's all right. Call it home. You're, you're home. Welcome home. We're glad you're here." But I'm realizing that appealing to your humanity, your hearts, is maybe not a winning strategy because all of you only really seem to care about your sticking points, your, your non-negotiables. The only non-negotiable here is that under no circumstance should 52 people be pushed out into the street in an Oklahoma winter. That should be the only non-negotiable that we're, that we're talking about here. All you have to do is let Food and Shelter run it until March 31 while you look for a new operator. It's that simple. It's not complicated. You're worried about security. Whose security are you worried about? The staff? Well, you're about to fire all of us. You don't really care about us. The guests there, you're about to kick them out into the winter, so you don't care about them. So, whose security are you actually concerned with? So, please, put your, your egos aside and stop letting the slimiest and most sadistic of you lead the discussion and lead your actions with this, and do the right thing here, and just let this stay open, a humane transition into the new operator. You can't salvage your relationship with Food and Shelter. That sucks, but that's, that's how it is. So, let it stay open. Let them run it as they've offered to do until you find a new operator. No gap in shelter service under, there should be no, no gap in shelter service, no matter what. For those of you who are actually thinking about voting to terminate this, would you, would you go back next door over there to a friend's house afterwards and tell them to their face which sticking points you thought are more, more important than, than their life, than, than the threat of them getting frostbite on their fingers, or losing a limb, or freezing deaths on the sidewalk? I don't think that you would go over there and tell them that, and that makes you cowards, or as Matt Peacock would say, "F-ing a-holes." So, please, stop making me come up here and beg you not to kill my friend.
You're done. You're done. Fuck you. No, you may not. You can leave, though. Get on out. Next, please.
Next speaker is Jenny Spurling, followed by John Scamyhorn, and then Diana Hutzel.
Oh, great. I'm Jenny Spurling. I live in Ward one. I was going to, like, talk about empathy a bit, but I just watched you, my council member rep from Ward one, flip off folks in the community. As your constituents, that sucks. No, I'm talking about you as my rep in Ward one. That sucks. It's also like unacceptable.
Address all of council, please.
I'm sorry. You just addressed us. Okay. I really urge you, I really urge you to reconsider closing the shelter. I, I realize that you and the Food and Shelter Board, and perhaps others, have had your own, ooh, you know, when you do things, you get like nervous up here with y'all, have had your own meetings or disagreements, but tonight's your chance to hear from what we as a community without being flipped off at, not collectively part of those boards or councils, feel about this shelter and its importance for the unhoused. I think it's important to remember that the individuals who rely on it are not statistics or problems to be swept away. They're human beings. Every night, they seek something we often, I absolutely do myself, take for granted. Listen, empathy isn't just about feeling sorry for someone. It's about recognizing the struggle and how easily it could be our own, and then taking action. This vote is, is action. As a community, we have a responsibility to look for one another, look after one another, especially as colder, more dangerous nights approach. This shelter is the only lifeline many of our unhoused community and friends has. By closing it, you're actively turning your backs on people already on the margins. Studies show, and people have said here, that shelter closures lead to more preventable deaths during extreme weather, and that is not a legacy this city, which would be a result of this vote, should ever carry. Empathy asks us to stand in someone else's shoes even when uncomfortable. We can't abandon people when they need us most. Please keep the shelter open and be a representative of a city that cares for all its residents, not just the fortunate. We need to move away from these beliefs of blame and shame and disgust to instead love and grow. And this vote is a way to do that for our city. Make better plans.
John Scamyhorn. Followed by Diana Hutzel, and then Stephen Ellis.
Good evening. My name is Dr. John Scamyhorn. I'm a retired chemical engineer. I've lived in Norman for 43 years, the entire time in Ward one. Norman has changed a lot during the years I've lived here, but the one unambiguous negative change is the deterioration due to vagrancy. Areas where homeless camps camp out are trashed. Some parks, playgrounds, libraries, and sidewalks are too dangerous for safe use. We are letting the several hundred vagrants in our community hold the more than 100,000 residents hostage. The issue before you today is a shelter funded by the city. A shelter should provide protection for the community from homeless individuals, as well as serve those individuals. However, under current management, the shelter has become a nexus for troublemakers, a safe space conveniently located in the middle of our downtown business district for optimum panhandling, theft, and vandalism activities. Even if moved, the problem remains as participants can use drugs and alcohol in the facility, and there is no expectation that those with addiction problems need seek treatment. There is no expectation that occupants actively seek employment. Just read social media. The staff at a friend's house employed by Food and Shelter are enablers and apologists for the chronically unhoused who are terrifying the residents of Norman. The current question concerning the retention of Food and Shelter to administer a friend's house becomes intertwined with the bigger question of should the city of Norman be running shelters for the homeless?
Can everybody speak about being a worker? I'm not, I'm not hearing. Okay. Go ahead, please.
There's overwhelming evidence of incompetence in Food and Shelter running a friend's house. While we discuss longer-term solutions, the city should dissociate itself from Food and Shelter as soon as possible. If not how many more months, how many more years will we be referring to this as a temporary shelter? Temporary. Thank you.
Diana? Hutzel, Stephen Ellis, Paul Wilson.
Good evening. Diana Hutzel, Ward five. While we strive to be compassionate, we must also acknowledge reality. No one doubts that the shelter provides an overnight refuge for a subset of Norman's unhoused community. But has the shelter achieved its overall intended impact? Has housing first been effective? Has the shelter reduced homelessness in Norman in the long term? Those questions can't be answered definitively because the contract failed to include the necessary elements to capture the required data to make that assessment. What we do know is that daily arrest logs from January 2022 through September 2024 document the significant rise in the number of unhoused in our community driven in part by an influx of unhoused individuals coming from other communities. Multiple unhoused arrest records include a notation of the arrested individual's city or state of origin. Forty individuals who were arrested with an out-of-state address who in subsequent arrests identified their status as unhoused. Places of origin include Ada, Blanchard, Edmund, Lexington, Lone Grove, Meeker, Moore, Newalla, Noble, Oklahoma City, Oz, Purcell, Rush Springs, Shawnee, Tecumseh, Tuttle, Watonga, Yukon, California, and Texas. NPD total arrests also indicate an influx. In 2022, the NPD arrested 530 unhoused individuals. In 2023, that number rose to 651. 452 of those were not on the arrest records the previous year. So far, NPD has arrested 641 unhoused as of the end of September. 436 of those are not on either the 2022 or 23 list. It is in a far stretch to assume that if the unhoused criminal element is migrating to Norman, so too then are the law-abiding unhoused, which represent the vast majority of unhoused. Let's be realistic. The city of Norman is not an effective shelter operator. The city, the challenges faced by our unhoused in our community far exceed the resources and expertise that the city can provide or that it can acquire independently. If your constituents want you to support shelter services, expand the community grant program. Create a program offering annual funding opportunities to qualified nonprofits with established shelter facilities and resources. Enable those organizations to leverage their existing expertise and extensive networks to maximize that impact of that funding to support the unsheltered, something on its own that the city of Norman cannot do. As for the current contract, winter is on the way. If the contractor agrees to the requirement, required changes, then the, then fund the contract appropriately through the end of March 2025, but discontinue being a shelter operator after that and use the grant program. If the contractor does not agree to the required changes, then you have no alternative but to terminate the contract. As elected council, you must focus on city requirements rather than what the contractor or critics feel is reasonable. Needs dictate the process, not the reverse. Thank you.
Stephen Ellis, Paul Wilson, and then Jay Swainston.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. Some shelter is better than no shelter. That's all you need to know to make a good decision tonight. Some shelter is better than no shelter. Even if you think our current shelter needs more security, you have to recognize that it's a lot more secure and safe for those who stay there than putting them out on the street. That's also true for the community, by the way. The community is more safe as long as people are resting in a shelter rather than out on the street. I know some of you are big mad at Food and Shelter for not being able to run or being willing to run the shelter that you now want. I don't really understand your willingness to second-guess their judgments, but that's not germane to this question. I'll get to that in miscellaneous. But you need to recognize, you've already won the shelter policy issue. Assuming you can find a vendor to do it, you're going to get exactly the shelter that you want. But no matter what else happens, you can't get that shelter right now. You certainly can't get it today. You certainly can't get it in 30 days. It's really unlikely you'll get it in 60 days. And even beyond that, it's paper and wishes that you guys are thinking about right now. So, the only issue that you should be thinking about is whether or not we limp along with what you have now until you actually locate a preferred provider, or whether you run the risk of going without a shelter at all. And that doesn't make any sense. There's no real question as to what's most important there. Some shelter is better than no shelter. But don't fumble the ball here. Don't give yourselves a deadline that you can't be sure that you're going to meet. If you vote no to maintain continuity of operations by taking Food and Shelter up on their offer until you find a replacement, make that the deadline, that's going to work. And if you find one quickly, Food and Shelter's still out quickly. It's the same damn upside as what you're proposing right now. What you're proposing now, however, runs... runs serious risks that in 30, or 60, or 90, or however many days that you want to put in the contract, that we're going to be caught without any shelter at all. And that is really the only unacceptable result. Don't fumble the ball. Take Food and Shelter up on their offer. You can get rid of them just as quickly if you do your job well. And if you fumble and you can't do your job well, we'll still have shelter continuity. No is the only vote here that's reasonable whatsoever. If you guys can get a new operator, a no vote doesn't hurt your position whatsoever. Vote no on this.
Evening again, Paul Wilson, Ward One. I like the fact that tonight everybody's talking about the arrests for the unhoused in 2022, 2023. But nobody's talking about the arrests of the housed. How many people were arrested that actually had homes? I can guarantee you it's a lot more than the ones that didn't have homes because the population is completely different. Also, if you look at this shelter being ran by Food and Shelter over the last two years, they have helped 591 people, which averages 24 people a month. That's almost one a day. In any definition, that is a success. Now, as far as the stuff that the city wants, yeah, I can see where the city wants some of those amendments in there. But you don't want to throw 52 more people out on the street in the middle of winter when it gets cold. During the summer, when we were discussing this, I gave you guys a challenge. I can almost guarantee you not a single person up here, minus the two new ones, did it. I challenge you to go home, sleep with your heater on in the middle of summer, on the floor, like most of the unhoused have to do on a nightly basis. And I'll guarantee you, nobody did it. Now, when it's getting cold, why don't you go home and turn on your air conditioning down to about 40-something degrees? Because I know they don't go that cold. But turn it on as cold as you can. Put about seven fans on you to make it even colder. And then try and sleep in that with a normal blanket. I can almost guarantee you, none of you will do it. And I can also guarantee not one of you has ever suffered like these people have where they have no place to go. I can say that I have done it. Now, I was lucky enough to find a shelter like the one we have. It wasn't a low barrier. I didn't have the problem of drug addiction, but due to circumstances beyond my control, the job market crashed where I was living, and I became homeless. It has taken a long time to get to where I am right now. And without an actual shelter, I don't know where I would be. So I urge you, please, vote no on this. Do not close down the shelter. If you do, each and every one of you that voted to shut it down needs to go down the street, go into the friend's house and tell them, "I'm sorry, but in 60 days, you guys are out on the street." We are your constituents, and I am not going to be shy to say this. This is the first time in 15 years I am ashamed to live in Ward One. Thank you.
Jay Swainston, followed by Mayumi Windler, and then Bill Hutzel.
Jay Swainston, Ward Eight. I've worked with some of the most vulnerable people in our community for years now. And one thing I can say is having a shelter is the base of any sense of stability. And right now, there are 52 people who get to go home, basically, to a shelter where they can work on making progress, on working towards whatever other goals they have as far as their housing goes, as far as their life goals go. They can have a spot to put their things, a safe place, and a home, basically, where they have community with the staff there and the other unhoused people there. And whatever difficulties may come up, if there's ever an unsafe situation, it's a lot less likely inside the shelter than it is on the street. They are a lot safer in the shelter than they are on the street. And it would be unconscionable and needlessly cruel to risk throwing them out as it gets cold. If you must replace the contract, replace the contract. And then reconvene, like Ellis said, to after and move everything around, switch the contract. Just make sure that there's no point that it's ever closed because people need stability to improve. Thank you.
Mayumi. Followed by Bill Hutzel, then Judy Moss.
Hello again, Mayumi Windler, Ward Two. So I'm wondering, how much is it going to cost for the city to operate the shelter? I know the city did that before. Is the cost relatively the same as what Food and Shelter budgets for it? Next question is, how much does it cost to build one of the little tiny homes that is at Food and Shelter? What if there was like just money to go to Food and Shelter to build more of those? And that would take more people off the streets and give them an actual, real home? That's all.
Bill Hutzel, Judy Moss, and then Leisha Schmidt.
Good evening, Bill Hutzel, Ward Five. First, I want to thank the auditor for doing such a great job finding discrepancies on the execution of the original contract for Food and Shelter. I only wish the Oversight Committee had done so. I watched a meeting last week. The one thing that stood out to me was a question from a council member about how other cities manage their shelters. The staff responded that other cities don't own or manage city shelters. The nonprofits do, supported by some city donations. If Food and Shelter doesn't want to sign the new contract, I think it is time for the city to get out of the shelter business. If Food and Shelter signs the new contract with the requirements Norman has requested, the contract still should end in March 2025. As I understand, the Salvation Army is expanding their overnight shelter by 50 beds. That is almost as much as the current city shelter accommodates. I think the city should close the shelter, donate the beds to the Salvation Army shelter. This is a group who has done this for decades around the country. Another concern from the meeting last week was the coming of winter and having a warming shelter. As I understand, Food and Shelter's main facility has a large dining area that's large enough to hold 200 people. Since they're in the services business, this could be used as a warming shelter. Also, the city should not maintain a reversible contract to pay nonprofits transport unhoused. Embark is free. The transport company hands out drug kits, which doesn't help the person in the long run. The addicted need treatment, not handouts. Stop supporting their habit. Anytime the government, whether it be local, state, or federal, gets involved in trying to fix a problem, it costs more and is less efficient. Just look at what is happening in North Carolina after the hurricane. It's the nonprofits doing the best job. Why? It's what they do. Norman needs to get out of the shelter business. These companies can apply for grants from government agencies for funding. It's time for Norman to be responsible with taxpayers. Cut this spending. Thank you.
Judy Moss. Leisha Schmidt, then Lindsey Davies.
Judy Moss, Ward Four. Please don't abandon us. And I'm not talking about the homeless. I'm talking about the downtown merchants, the citizens of Silk Stocking, First Courthouse, and Regional Townside. Because that's how we feel. We feel like we have been abandoned. I was disturbed to see that there was whenever it came to the impact statement or assessment that should have been done on this contract was weighed by the city council. And I can't help but wonder if that assessment had been made, if we would have been spared these two years of sheer misery. Whenever Food and Shelter opened, I heard it said that Regional Townside is a poor neighborhood and they won't mind. Well, it is true that we do have at least half of our residents that live at or below the property level. But it definitely is not true that we don't mind. We mind very much whenever our children have to watch homeless people have psychotic episodes while they're on the playground. This has happened at least three times that I know of. We mind very much whenever Food and Shelter's not properly securing the trash that's developed through their feeding program. This is styrofoam cups, plates, and trays that are not discarded properly and with Oklahoma wind, end up in Bishop's Creek, which is one of the tributaries of our Thunderbird watershed. This is our drinking water. And styrofoam is a very dangerous pollutant. We mind very much whenever our neighborhood is littered with trash and shopping carts. In November, the city came out and cleaned out the flood canals that run through our neighborhood. They drug nine or 10 shopping carts out of that flood canal. A few weeks later, we had that major flash flood. That flood canal was roaring, running like a roaring river through our neighborhood. Had they not cleaned out that canal when they did, we would have had a major flooding incident in our neighborhood, including the cottages on Reed Street. The voters in Ward Four, the majority of the voters in Ward Four, are in agreement with what's been done with the policies concerning the homeless. But that doesn't mean that all of us agree with that. I ask you again, do not abandon us because we cannot do this by ourselves.
Leisha Schmidt. Lindsey Davies, and then Stacy Hatcher.
Schmidt, Ward Two. I can be one of my friends here, fellow Norman residents, I guess, in that I've been here for 68 years. I was born in Norman, grew up in Norman, grew up in Norman when Central State Hospital was here. And obviously, the elimination of long-term resident care for people who really need it had an impact on the people who are homeless here in Norman. But I was raised walking back and forth on Porter from school to my home with my brothers and sisters. We were not taught to be afraid of people who are homeless. And I think that's one of the things that I really loved about old Norman. We had a lot of characters. There were a lot of people around. I love new Norman. Much bigger now. We have a lot more people who are without shelter, and we have a lot fewer options. When we were growing up in Norman, if there were people who didn't have a place to stay, there were really cheap places, detached garages and people's apartments. There were options for people who didn't make a whole lot of money, and they lived all over Norman. Those options are not available now. And that's the responsibility of the city of Norman to consider that as a factor when we look at our responsibilities to help people who are unsheltered. I really do applaud those of you who have demonstrated throughout your service an open heart and an open mind for the people who struggle. And I really, I applaud that. I try to support, all of us try to support you in any way we can. And of course, we support the people who work full-time. I'm just a volunteer and do this part-time. Who work full-time to try to understand the challenges and the situations that people find themselves in. And they're all unique. But I would just want to draw people's attention in particular. I'm sure all of you have been to a friend's house, right? All the council members. You're not supposed to answer that, but I know who you are. I've been to a friend's house several times. It's usually late in the evening. Never been on the men's side. I admit, I'm not allowed over there. But on the women's side, who I see are the people who are my friends and neighbors, who are my age and older. And I see women who are pregnant, and I see women who are in wheelchairs. And I just really cannot believe that we're considering closing that shelter, that opportunity to be safe, even just at night. Women who are there, you see them, and they're tired. They're weary. They just want a place to lay their head. And I know that all of you want that as well. You don't want people on the streets. We can't go back to the days when there were people freezing on the street because there are people whose stories don't have to end with the worst possible situation that they're in right now. So I would just really urge you to dig deep and find a compromise, find a plan before there's even the possibility that
Lindsey Davies. Followed by Stacy Hatcher, and then Rob Norman.
Lindsey Davies, Ward Two. I even talked with the local trauma therapist who spoke at council meeting a few months ago when the same shelter was being threatened. She shared about a client who had become unhoused while waiting for SSD to come through. They shared how vital a friend's house was in their attempt to get back on their feet. Hearing the shelter might close, they shared that they would rather step in front of a train than face one more night on the streets. Fortunately, because the shelter was able to remain open at that time, this individual's SSD case has been approved, and they are now housed. They were already in their life over facing the streets again, but a friend's house was there to allow them the help they needed. And the situation lays out what is horribly wrong with some council members saying that somehow there's the sort of safety net out there to catch people if only a friend's house were to close. As a peer support specialist member who specializes in finding resources in the community, both for members in immediate crisis and for those who are chronically underserved, I can tell you without a doubt there is no alternative to what we currently have. We would love to be wrong about this, to have so many backup organizations ready at a moment's notice to basically swoop in and care for 50-plus human lives who literally depend on a night shelter to keep them alive. I'm more than happy to sit with anyone wondering if maybe, just maybe, we have enough resources to support them. I'll talk bed numbers, food bank policies, transportation limits, legal shortfalls. I'll take the most up-to-date resource packet available in Norman and do what I've done with others in need. We can go down the list and call each organization, charity, city, or state agency, and see if we can find a place for one citizen to stay, get food for the month, all the legal documents needed to even begin looking for a job in transportation to and from said job. All this to say, we just literally do not have a viable system out there without this night shelter. Not now, definitely not before freezing temperatures move in. And this year, we have without our main library, so having a safe, warm place to sleep is vital. To close a friend's house before a permanent alternative night shelter is actually up and running is cruel and quite literally will be deadly this winter. We will be on the national news with this, a disgrace in the eyes of the entire country. And real quick, I'd like to add, council members promised that they would never vote to close the shelter before a viable option is in place. With all due respect, I'd like to draw attention to the council members who literally lied to their constituents' faces. When my son lies, he is held accountable and faces a consequence, and he loses my trust until he can actually earn it back. Where is their accountability? Why should we not have a consequence? And why in the world would I ever believe or trust them again? 60 days will be full holiday season. How can you come home at night, shut your eyes, and actually sleep knowing your vote to put these 52 individuals on the street at the same time emptily preach love and community? As a lifelong resident in Norman, I can say I don't think I've ever been this ashamed. Thank you.
Stacy Hatcher. Followed by Rob Norman, and then Ella Crenshaw.
Stacy Hatcher. I am not at the moment a resident of Norman because, as somebody pointed out, it's gotten quite costly to live here. So I live farther out because I live on a very limited income. I want to say thank you. I came back to Oklahoma after leaving for a little while, and I was quite impressed because Norman has a shelter. And being somebody that has been involved And being somebody that has been involved in many different walks of life, I found that impressive for a small town that has grown like you have to care that much. So I'm very happy to hear that you're not going to close it. You're just trying to figure out how to handle this. I spent 10 years serving on committees free of charge for the state of Oklahoma. That is a suggestion I've not heard from anybody here today with all of these good comments and suggestions. And I'm sorry, I'm getting shaky. Maybe a committee would help, a small volunteer committee of not only city people, but homeless people, people to represent the people in the community, to get the ideas together to possibly help you with this. The national average on homelessness is 1 in 500 people. That means you know somebody that's homeless, you just might not realize it. Have you ever known a college kid comes home with your child for Christmas? Have you asked them, do they have a home? They might not. Sometimes those shelters are full of our veterans, college kids, professionals, a lot of women, suddenly divorced, hit by a tornado, lose a job, and guess what? They're on the street because they don't have the money for a hotel. Or they did for a little while until their credit card was maxed out. And then when they're looking for help, where do they end up? On the street. Because the hotel locks up their room and keeps everything they have. Those homeless people are not just something blowing on the street. They're your neighbors. They're residents here too, and they have rights. They just don't know how to tell you because they're so tied up emotionally with it. And when you think it can't happen to you, you're wrong. It can be you, your neighbor, your child, your parent. Please keep that in mind as you try to solve this problem. I had so many things to say, and I've listened to everybody here today, and more things came up. So the one thing I do want to ask you, security. Who do you want that security for in that contract? Is it to keep the residents of the shelter safe from each other? Or is it to keep the local businesses safe?
Rob Norman, then Ella Crenshaw, then Rodney Johnson.
Rob Norman, Ward Three. This closure is a no without two necessary amendments that I don't see in the resolution, that I don't see anywhere. First, a necessary amendment is, under no circumstances will the emergency shelter close. Second, related to the first, if there is no operator, the city will assume operation of the shelter until one is secured. Now, if you want a sense of urgency, there's one right there. You'll get an operator if you're looking at the fact that you might have to do it. Now, let's look at this. These so-called problems with what's going on in the street that I keep hearing about, that's what happens when you don't have a shelter, when you don't have places for people to go. That's why we have one in the first place. This effort, the tip of the spear of this effort, was originally done by retired Colonel Bill Scanlon, a conservative member of council, who would sit here before we had one every council meeting and say, we have got to have a warming shelter. And he didn't quit until we had one. And here we are looking at creating this problem again because we don't have the right legal protections in place for this thing. Now, I want to mention a few things I heard tonight, a few clauses. What we could do is, if the city has to take over, here's something contradictory. Other entities won't commit to taking over the contract. There is an operator, but the board has yet to vet the opportunity. We're supposed to hear back from their board this week. Now, I don't think staff in saying those things are trying to oversell the situation. Why are we meeting tonight if this so-called operators' board hasn't even met and decided whether they want to do it or not? It looks like we have no place to go if they say no later this week. We're back to square one. And again, we don't have the amendments in place to make sure these people aren't turned out into the street in 60 days. Worst-case scenario, I hope so. In other words, what we don't have is we don't have a plan. Back a couple of years ago, when the YFAC was about to open, this grand operator went sideways. It was apparent that our crown jewel of Norman Forward was getting ready to open and we had no operator. What did staff do then, spearheaded by Jason Olson? Jason Olson put together a plan. He got together the Norman Optimists Club, the Sooner Swim Club, MPS, people who knew how to do these things, and said, the city is taking this over. This place will open. We will not do this without an operator. We will gather together...
...doing that here, and the stakes are much higher. Thank you.
Ella Crenshaw, Rodney Johnson, Christina Owen.
Hi, Ella Crenshaw, Ward Six. I've heard a lot of really impactful things said tonight about this issue, and I feel like my words alone couldn't possibly be enough to encapsulate the importance of caring for our homeless neighbors. So instead, I have another words for you. Matthew Chapter 25. When the Son of Man comes in his glory and all the angels with him, he will sit on his throne in heavenly glory. All the nations will be gathered before him, and he will separate the people one from another as a shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will put the sheep on his right and the goats on his left. Then the king will say to those on his right, "Come, you who are blessed by my Father. Take your inheritance, the kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world. For I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink. I was homeless, and you gave me shelter. I needed clothes, and you clothed me. I was sick, and you cared for me. I was in prison, and you came to visit me." And the righteous will answer him, "Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you something to drink? When did we see you a stranger and invite you in, needing clothes and clothed you? When did we see you sick or in prison and go to visit you?" And the king will reply, "I tell you the truth. Whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers of mine, you did for me." Then he will say to those on his left, "Depart from me, you who are cursed, and do the eternal fire prepared for the devil and his angels. For I was hungry, and you gave me nothing to eat. I was thirsty, and you gave me nothing to drink. I was a wanderer, and you did not invite me in. I needed clothes, and you did not clothe me. I was sick and in prison, and you did not look after me." They also will answer, "Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty, or a stranger or needing clothes, or sick or in prison and did not help you?" And he will reply, "I tell you the truth. Whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me." Thank you.
Rodney Johnson, then Christina Owen, then Lori Swan.
I've lived in the area for 25 years, and I'm a moderate. I believe in practicality. And I'm amazed at my first city council meeting that our community is this divided. People shouting from the gallery, council members flipping people off from the dais. I'm shocked. Now, for 17 years, I worked for the ambulance service, and I can tell you, I have seen people die just about every way there is to die. Now, in an emergency situation, one of the things you need is time. Time is your most valuable commodity. In this situation, you have time. Obviously, the community is divided, and I don't believe that you and your responsibilities have taken enough time to work this situation out. There is no other option. And people will die. And I have to say that has, and I've been involved in politics, I've actually written 15 pieces of legislation that had to do with EMS and been able to go to the Capitol and lobby and pass seven. Leadership in politics begins with the leaders. And leaders have to take a practical stance. And for someone to say, as I heard in the previous meeting, that there are other organizations out there that will take up this situation, and I talk to churches and they're willing to do it, that, I'm telling you, is a lie. There is no other, these organizations are stretched. I have worked to try to help people, so I know something about the resources available in Norman. It is very hard to cobble together something for some people. Now, do I believe that this shelter needs to have organizations and ways for people to move out of the shelter and move up and job help and all of that? I do believe that. Now, I would have hoped that we have that already, but I don't know. I don't know enough about this situation right now to know if we have that or not. But I can tell you, Norman's resources for those organizations are stretched to the limit. And I don't know...
Christina Owen, Lori Swan, Kimberly Blodgett.
Christina Owen, Wards Four and Eight. Most people don't become homeless due to addiction and mental health issues, but you do develop mental health issues and turn towards drugs and alcohol when your previous neighbors demonize you and treat you like garbage. How would you react to people constantly harassing you, mocking you, doxing you, spitting on you, and randomly kicking you in your sleep for fun? How would you feel if you slept in increments of 30 minutes to two hours at a time, only to wake up to violence, a bright flashlight in your face, or to find your stuff stolen again? Have you ever tried to sleep outside when it's so cold you can't feel your hands, face, or feet? Have you ever wondered if you'd even wake up? Would you sit there miserable, cold, tired, and think about how no one you knew could even help you? Would you become angry, depressed, anxious? Living on the streets is a traumatic experience on its own. It causes mental health issues. Most people are in the shelter due to an injury that left them unable to work, or beating cancer only to have the medical bills eat you out of house and home. Fleeing domestic violence, aging out of foster care, being disabled or elderly without family to care give. A friend's house hands out more adult diapers than tampons. More people ask for mobility devices than bicycles. More people seek sooner care for ongoing health issues before seeking SNAP benefits for food. Those that are chronically homeless are an aging, disabled community without a system of support to care for them. Those who aren't, statistically, stay at the shelter for less than one month. A friend's house is highly successful, with more than 70% of all guests who have ever stayed at a friend's house not needing to stay in a shelter in the entire state of Oklahoma for anywhere from more than three months to over a year, according to Oklahoma's Homeless Management Information System. And yes, that other 30% includes the current 52 people there. Again, a friend's house never lost CLEET-certified security. There is no money to recoup as it was spent on the same security people with additional security with military experience, bouncing experience, and eviction experience, all also having training in de-escalation and trauma-informed care. The cost for this misunderstanding will be dead neighbors, and it probably won't be a scary criminal. It'll probably be someone who looks like your mom or your grandpa in a wheelchair. And this isn't an assumption, a threat, or fear mongering, it's a fact. Please don't vote for cruelty and death.
Lori Swan, Kimberly Blodgett will be next, and then Michael Blanc. Can you pull that down?
Lori Swan, Ward Four. I'm homeless. For the past 15 months, I've been staying at the shelter on Gray Street. I feel very safe there. When I was taken to the hospital and had to have emergency surgery, I came back five days later, and luckily, they had a bed for me. I was probably at the weakest that I've ever been. I didn't feel unsafe there. I have heard a lot of people say that we have to close the shelter in order to protect the most vulnerable among us. That has got to be the silliest thing that I've ever heard in my entire life. I've talked to people who have to sleep outside. Luckily, I haven't had to do that. I'm fortunate that I had a car when I was sleeping outside. But outside, mostly people walk around all night because it's not safe to sleep. They walk around till sun up when they're allowed to go into the park, and they find an out-of-the-way area of the park so they can get a few hours of sleep before they have to leave, before the sun gets too bright to sleep. Closing the shelter to protect the most vulnerable among us, that just does not fly at all. It makes no sense. Please keep the shelter open. Thank you.
Kimberly. Michael Blanc, you'll follow. Kimberly.
Hi again, Kim Blodgett, Ward Seven. I just wanted to come back up and mention that my son, for a long time, worked at a friend's house, and he lived with me at the time, so I guess you could say he was unhoused. But he lived with me at the time, and I just remember the stories that he would tell me. He would come home, and he was never afraid. He valued his work there and the people. And countless times, we were out just walking downtown Norman, or even at Andrews Park. I spent a lot of time there. And an unhoused person from a friend's house would approach us. It's happened, I would say, at least three times. But at one time in particular, I remember, it was a woman, and she approached him because obviously he works there, she knows him, and felt comfortable and safe. And so she approached us and was talking with us. And when she walked away, we had a nice conversation, and when she walked away, my son said, she's about to get housing. He was so excited for her. So to hear some of the comments of people saying that nothing good is coming out of there, they're not helping them do better, that's ridiculous. Yes, they are. And many of them have been able to leave there because they got housing. And so they are helping them. And also, I was just offended by someone making comments about the employees there. My son was an employee there. He's only not because he moved to Tulsa. So I just urge you, please, to keep it open, especially since you have no plan. And so I don't see how with no plan, you could vote tonight to just put 50-something people on the street. So I urge you to please vote no. Thank you.
Michael Blanc, followed by Russell Rice, then Marguerite Larson, Zach Luttrell.
Michael Blanc, Ward One. Honestly, I had thought about what I was going to say in this section for most of the day. I found out the meeting was going to happen, and I drive a route right now where I deliver auto parts. It's a little easier than what I used to do. What I used to do was work in child welfare for the state of Oklahoma. Did that for about two years. And that's a hard job. But so is any job that delivers frontline aid and services to the public. I've seen how hard that job is. I couldn't do it, I'll be honest. I learned a lot from it, but that wasn't a job I could do, not do it healthily. But I have seen people who can, and those are incredible service providers like the one that we are unfortunately losing. Another great service provider I learned a lot from was when I worked with youth here in Cleveland County and up in Oklahoma City, was there's a fantastic organization called Pivot that's up there. And I got to talk to their youth shelter director at one point. I asked him, his name's Chris Harvard, because I had a, I worked with young men who honestly probably... probably would be a lot like a lot of the folks who wind up needing these services if they age out of foster care. And I asked him, I'm curious, man, how can you, how do you do a job like this? Because I watched one of my clients, sweet kid, but young man struggling, right? I watched him shout in this, in this guy's face, you know, as angry as he could be, 17-year-old, just yelling at him. And the guy kept his cool. And I said, you know, Chris, what do you do? And he said, man, it's, here in this organization, we value connection before correction. And that is a guiding philosophy that I've seen them use. But the thing I'm getting at here is, you know, ever since I was a kid, I grew up here in Norman. I'm only, I'm only in my 30s, right? But when I was a kid, one of the first things I learned about, remember being in elementary school, one of the first things I learned when I was seven years old was that there are good people in communities that value connection before correction, that value helping. One of those places was Food and Shelter for Friends. One of my first experiences that taught me the value of service in my community was going to my elementary school, Jackson Elementary, to go feed folks through Food and Shelter. And I know a lot of you who have been longtime Norman residents, I know you guys on council, you've heard a lot. I know you've worked really hard to try to find solutions. I do appreciate that. But when we value good providers, when we look for solutions, it is worth it. It's not very often that you have a very easy decision to make, and right here, here it is. Simply vote no. Allow your current provider to provide what they've done.
Russell Rice. Marguerite Larson, you are after Russell, and then Zach Luttrell.
Rice, Ward two. I'd like to thank all the folks who are over at Friends House watching right now. Also, I'd like to thank the people, never mind, I won't say it. It saddens me to hear y'all, Solay Food and Shelter's name. They've worked so hard to maintain a shelter for us for two years, and it, to hear folks in agreement, man, I just, I just don't see it. I don't understand it. So do not close the shelter. That, if you vote no on this without a plan, that's what you're doing. If you vote yes on this without a plan, you will be effectively closing a friend's house. So please, do not do that. That is my vote. Thank you.
Marguerite.
Marguerite Larson, Ward six. A year ago, October the 7th, there was a massacre in Gaza. There was a massacre on the kibbutz. Million people, we don't even want to go there. Tonight, there is a memorial for those victims. But I chose not to go to that memorial because I want to make sure we don't have a massacre coming in Norman. And if you guys close the shelter, you are basically creating a massacre for the people who call that home. There is no reason in the world why you should place people on the streets, treat them unethically, unhumanely, for no reason at all, simply because you don't agree with the way they look, or you don't feel that they fit in your society. I really, really implore you not to close the shelter. You need to keep the shelter open. No more massacres, no more people freezing on the street. It's not right, and it's up to you to take care of the citizens. And you all have been talking about getting a permanent shelter for a long time. It's never happened. Maybe now's the time you should get out there and actually do it. Thank you.
Zach Luttrell. Debbie Burleson will follow Zach, and then Mike Davidson.
All right. My name is Zach Luttrell. I live here in Norman, and Ward four, I've made this city my home for nearly a quarter century. I believe with a deep conviction that everyone deserves a roof over their head, not only as a matter of security and stability, well-being, but as a matter of human dignity. Like many of the folks gathered here, I chose Norman because this town has been a great place to raise a family. With the University of Oklahoma and Norman Public Schools educating our children, opportunity exists for my kids in a way that my grandparents' generation couldn't dream of. And it's been a pleasure to raise my seven children here in Norman, to have the chance to become a foster father and to raise, help raise many other families. And as the second child of seven, as the product of my parents' hard work and the beneficiary of a lot of privilege, there's no place that I would rather be than Norman, Oklahoma. In a big family like mine, everybody helps out. So when I was old enough to figure out where I could best help out, I sought out folks who were already doing the work and doing it well, and that's how I met April Dozier. I got lucky enough to work a few years later for Food and Shelter before the new campus on Reed, doing educational vocational outreach with folks so they could find work and a path off the streets. I learned a lot about the struggles facing poor and working families in our community. I found the challenges that our neighbors face are growing. We can see rents rising and evictions increasing across the state. Millions are struggling, and many are falling into homeless for the very first time. The sight of tents and people sleeping on sidewalks has become increasingly common, but also increasingly common is dangerous scapegoating rhetoric that dehumanizes and blames those most in need. Tens of thousands of people die every year for lack of stable housing, with the life expectancy among people experiencing homelessness nearly 30 years less than the average American. In Norman, our unhoused neighbors are dying while property developers beg for public handouts and spam text messages. The real solutions to the homelessness crisis take time, and they take investment, patience, and persistence. Success in this line of work is often invisible to the public eye, but the evidence of disinvestment in public services lies in plain sight. This council has the opportunity to invest in a future where all of our children do better, and I urge it to do so. Keep the shelter open.
Debbie Burleson. Followed by Mike Davidson, and then Jeanette Coker.
Hi, Debbie Burleson, Ward eight. I'm not going to ramble on, not ramble, I don't have anything really long to read or say or anything like that. All I want to say is lately, I have been real disappointed in the things that are going on in Norman. You shouldn't be closing that shelter. It hasn't been thought through very carefully, and I'm real disappointed. Do better. That's all I got to say.
Mike Davidson.
Good evening, Council. Mike Davidson, Ward one. I've been hearing a whole lot of really good stuff tonight from a number of people who stay in the shelter, a number of people who work around it, and I was trying to think of a little bit of interesting perspective that I might be able to bring. But for a few years before I moved to Oklahoma, which was about 12 years ago now, I actually worked with the police in Central London. That's the Metropolitan Police Service. And as you can imagine, our homeless issue there is a little, little larger in scale than we have here in Norman. And what strikes me constantly about our city, here in Norman, is the quality of the services that we receive versus the, versus the cost and the outcomes. We have a low violence, great outcome service right now that really is not costing us a whole lot, and we are looking to put in unnecessary security that will cost us more money to create an environment that is less trusting. It just seems counterintuitive to me. Big cities would jump at the chance to have this kind of program because it acts in a way that is responsible and builds community so that we don't need to treat people like criminals. We can treat them like neighbors. And so I would just implore you all to see the service that you have on your doorstep that you're currently flushing down the toilet, because it's incredible. These people genuinely care, and I get to see it every day, and it's a privilege. It's just worth considering, because if you say goodbye to it, there might not be another one, and you think you're getting a better deal, but I just don't think you're gonna, because people are out for your money. These guys actually want to help. That's all I got to say.
Jeanette. Cindy Pope will follow Jeanette, and then William Beegan.
Hello. I'm Jeanette Coker, Ward four, and I'm so pleased to be here tonight to support the needs of the homeless. I see this time as an opportunity to start really helping homeless people. Like I've said before, what we do now is counterproductive. We are simply enabling people to adjust to the homeless lifestyle. And for many of them, that means it enables people to become deeper into drugs and continue the patterns of destructive behavior that have resulted in them becoming homeless initially. Here's what I hear from homeless people, particularly, I will talk about women and girls. Girls and women that are strong and don't want to get deeper into drugs, and that happens so often if they go where drugs are readily available. That's our shelters. And I'm sure you know about the sex trafficking, and that's a problem here in Norman, and I never hear it talked about. Last night, it occurred to me, maybe things are coming together. That happens sometimes, but we don't always recognize it. It looks like a disaster, but it can be an opportunity or even a blessing. With winter coming on, what looks like a problem may result in a lot of people deciding they're ready for some tough love help, addiction treatment, or to get back on their mental health medication. It's time. We have a councilperson with a viable plan, and I've seen it on Facebook, and it looks wonderful to me. It looks workable. Why don't we give it a try? We should, and we can do better. Thank you.
Cindy Pope. William Beegan, and then Evan Dunn. Cindy. Yeah. I'm just kind of letting the other ones know they're next.
Cindy Pope, Ward eight. Last year at this time, I was homeless. The year before that, I had a neighbor. She sits up there with y'all. Never once did I feel unsafe at that shelter, except for one night, when two guys from OU come up there, start bugging all of us girls, pulled out a joint. I said, no, I'm good. One of the men that was there grabbed it from him, lit it up. They took it from him, and they left. Not 10 minutes later, this man, he could hardly sit up. So I'm here to tell you, there were no drugs and stuff going on inside that shelter, but outside of it, from your great college kids, that was scary, especially when, not even 10 minutes later, this guy couldn't stand up. I slept good when I was there because I knew I was safe. Between 55 to 65% of the people that are over there right now are over 50. These are not people that are just wanting to do drugs and being out. 12 hours is what, what it got me. My husband died of cancer. He went into the hospital 12 hours before the insurance man came to our house so he could sign for his new job. It can happen to anybody. And you throw people out on the street during the winter, and they die? That's on y'all. That's on y'all. Keep it open. Thank you.
William Beegan.
William Beegan, Ward eight. I was formerly homeless last year at this time. I stayed in the shelter for a little while while I was trying to get the help needed to get everything I needed, birth certificate, ID, what have you, to get housing. Without the help from a friend's house, I would not be standing here today. I would have been frozen to the sidewalk, dead. If you vote to close the shelter, you're going to see a lot more of that. You're going to have to scrape people off the sidewalk, and how's that going to look as someone said to the SEC? Thank you.
Evan. Evan Dunn is next, and following Evan is Sue Sanders, and then Joseph Ruhl.
Evan Dunn, Ward seven. What they do at Food and Shelter for Friends is, or Friends House, is just like, as everyone has said, it is saving people's lives. I think we owe them even, you know, an even longer extension because we have 70-plus parks here. It is a shame, it is a, it is pathetic that we don't have some type of a program to give people things to do, skills to acquire. We could be quarterbacking that, and we're not. Keep it open.
Sue Sanders.
Sue Sanders, Ward four. In 2021, Norman scored nine out of 100 in crime in America, zero being the worst. That's not where I moved in '98. My house is on Reed Avenue, across from Food and Shelter. Since built, there's been a surge in crime. In '22, a path was cut through my yard as a shortcut to the alley. When I asked a man to use the road instead, he screamed through a large rock at my head and chased me to my door. The next time I called to report trespassing, the chief officer lectured me that police couldn't enforce in my area, warrants weren't paid, so the city had to pay for jailing, which was prohibitive. I was also told that since Norman brought in so many homeless from OKC in order to qualify for COVID funds in '22, that the police were understaffed, too understaffed to handle this population, which commits 80% of the crimes. I've just looked this up on Google. Near daily, fire trucks, ambulances to Food and Shelter, as well as hourly, embarked vans, school buses, and other city vehicles are a drain on city resources. In April this year, I was getting regular threats of violence and rape. People were stealing in broad daylight and my property, harassing, harming my car. They were knocking on my windows and doors. A man peered in and exposed his genitals through my window. Despite extreme financial hardship, I fled my home for fear of my life. I have to go check my mail there every Sunday. My yard is a trash dump. Crowds and encampments across the street and southward have ballooned with carts, bikes, shelters, mattresses, and furniture piled up. Blatant amphetamine psychosis and antisocial behavior flares up even in the minutes I get my mail once a week. I've seen fires, people injecting drugs, an overdose treated with Narcan, fights with weapons. I've got offers to sell my house through developers, some flippers, a real estate agent. They all backed out when they saw the neighborhood. Norman needs to spend money to relocate the Food and Shelter population that are on the street and make my neighborhood livable, not spend millions on another arena. If this sounds extreme, it's because it is extreme. Go live on Reed and Ufala, visit Reed and Ufala, especially on the weekend. Thank you.
Joseph Ruhl. After Joseph is Cynthia Rogers, and then Chelsea Grappel.
I'll make this quick. I once heard it said by a Texan, and I'm Texan myself, but I've been in Norman for quite some time now. He says, people are a lot like cows. Just a little food for thought there. Best of luck with the situation. Best of luck with the situation.
Cynthia Rogers.
Cynthia Rogers, Ward 4, also on Reed Ave., but south of Alameda. So, here's the thing, I made some, we have an affordable housing crisis in Norman. That's what the AIM Housing Committee will tell you. So, we're not doing anything about that, so sorry, homeless people. People can't afford homelessness. Currently, we have a low-barrier shelter that allows people to get off the street, which is better than being on the street. It's people not sleeping in your business patios, people having a place to be that's not in your yard at night. But if we get rid of that, because we think we need a high-barrier shelter, that's my art, really, the solution is we need all three. Any community that's been successfully making inroads to homelessness has all three. You can't just have one-size-fits-all solution. A high-barrier shelter is not the solution for everybody who is unhoused. And trying to fit everybody into this solution that makes some people feel more comfortable isn't actually helping all the people who are most fragile in our community. So, my very, this is, you're going to hate this, all three. Why not keep a low barrier, find a way to have a higher-barrier shelter for folks who thinks we need it, and keep working on affordable housing? We need all three. Shutting down a shelter because you want it to be a one-size-fits-all is not going to help the solution at all.
Chelsea Gravel in Carlenda will follow. Chelsea.
Chelsea Gravel, Ward 4. First, I want to thank our city for understanding the importance of this issue, the importance of the audit and the findings. I want to thank our city attorney for understanding what kind of place these findings place our city into. I also want to thank our city auditor for doing a great job on her investigation. This is sad, and we cannot fix it, but this is not our job. We have had the best operator in place for this job. She wants to do the bare minimum with the population that wants the bare minimum, so we can continue to, so they can continue to live the life they're choosing. Do you know how many of them have a warrant out for their arrest whenever they are contacted by an officer? Almost all of them. Some of them arrested twice in one day. Hiding as a homeless person is the best way to get away with your crimes. Let's see, but this is, we cannot do anything with an operator that will not sign a contract. The fault of this falls on our operator. Our operator is corrupt, and there is a reason they will not comply. Earlier, it was asked how much the tiny homes were with Food and Shelter. Well, Gene McCowen charged the public $25,000, telling them that was the full amount and cost to build each home. Then he got $75,000 in grant money donated to build them. Plus, he got all of the materials donated to build them. All of the labor was donated. All of the builders donated. Architects were donated. And every little last thing you can think of was donated, including the land. Every last penny was donated, and Gene McCowen pocketed thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, in that idea of Food and Shelter. So, of course, we have corrupt providers. Now, my last point is about a man that sleeps in his car nightly downtown. Having a shelter in our facility of Norman in our surrounding area means that we cannot provide help for these individuals by taking them to another place that can provide them help. So, by offering 52 beds, we are not able to help 137 that stayed at our shelter in August. This gentleman who lives in his car on Legacy Trail has had a parking ticket for the last four days. He has not come back to his car. Is he okay? Is he alive? Is he dead? Is he arrested? Nobody knows. How would we know? You can just disappear as a homeless person very easily. Who knows if he's okay? Who knows if he's not? Do we really want to allow that in our city whenever we have suffering homeless people that need help and a provider that will not even do the bare minimum? Instead, she's denying to sign our contract. We are simply asking for the bare minimum, which we should be asking for more. Thank you.
Carlenda, then Cheryl Ann, and then Caleb McGee.
Carlenda Gravel, Ward 4, Council Mayor. First, I do want to thank you all for making this very difficult decision. This is a really difficult decision for our city. It's been a difficult decision for years for where to put it, what to do, how to make it work for people who are living there, staying there, getting a bed there. But let's be clear, there are not 52 people sleeping in 52 beds month after month. It isn't a residence where we're saying 52 people must leave. There are only a handful, we have no idea because of the reporting, that actually come back and stay night after night, but a large majority don't. So, out of the 137, that were actually the number from last month, 93, three months in a row, and back in November, that never changed magically. These people are floating in and out of the facility, so they're still sleeping out on the streets. They're not sleeping in a bed, the same bed at the shelter, night after night. Now, let's also remember the city auditor's findings of 121 emergency calls for overdose, hemorrhage, laceration, and assault. So, the longer we have the facility in the situation that it is without wanding and complete certified security, which has been made clear by the meetings that we've had recently, as well as by when the city auditor asked who the security was, and instead of that being answered, she was kindly escorted out of the facility. So, to be clear, the building is not code compliant, not fire compliant, hasn't been zoned properly. According to the staff, the kind of population that are staying there could walk just a few feet away to the train tracks because they're in that state of mind. So, we have a facility that's not the right location, obviously from the downtowners' businesses, and everything we talk about, this building should have never been selected. If it was done according to the charter, it would have been rezoned, and the 350-foot radius citizens would have had an opportunity to voice their petition of not wanting this there. But you didn't give us the chance for that. You didn't give anybody the chance for that. We have rules in our city that determine where bars go, strip clubs, churches, prostitute places. We have rules where things are done. We have rules where we put these types of facilities because of the type of customers or the type of clients that are going to be there, and how that is going to affect the surrounding businesses. So, we've talked about not in my backyard, your backyard, city manager's backyard, Rick Knighton backyard. We all have really concerns. We all know there's a reason to...
Cheryl Ann.
And Dunso, Ward 4 and 6. Okay, so, it's been, what, a year and a half that I've come and talked to you about this particular issue, that we have never had a comprehensive plan in place to deal with the problem at hand. And every time we try to do something, it's, you know, basically a Band-Aid on a huge, huge wound, okay? And at this point, the Band-Aid needs to be ripped off, okay? It's a tough decision. Grow a pair and do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Caleb McGee, Ward 4. So, I've heard a lot tonight from folks that I don't normally agree with, who I absolutely do agree with this time. This gentleman right here said the city shouldn't be in the shelter business. No, you should not. Get out of the way. Let's do our jobs.
Excuse me for a second, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Jones. I'm a veteran. I have deceased kids, and I had an argument with an individual last night where I spent the night. So, I'm homeless, basically, because my kids are deceased. So, nobody has to pay for that, nobody in this room. So, you have to rip what you saw. You have to rip what you saw. So, make your decision. Some of you guys have to go to bed tonight, knowing that you made the decision that you made, regardless of the immediate situation it has to do with anybody. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Yeah, I did hear something in public comments that caught my attention about an amendment to say that it won't close, and the city will take over if no operator steps forward after 60 days, which I believe most of council does not want to see the shelter close. And so, if there is a way to do that amendment, I am happy to make it. City Attorney, I was looking at the resolution. I'm not really sure where I would put that.
I'm just trying to go over where I think we are. I mean, we have a motion with regard to the resolution. It's written on the floor in a second.
Right.
So, then the question becomes, how do you go about further amending what has already been moved for and seconded?
We'd have to pass this or shoot it now.
You had a motion and a second on the floor to adopt, then you had an amendment that passed, changing it from 30 days to 60. You can take it as additional amendment, that it would take precedence over the main motion on the floor, and then you come back to the main motion once you close out the amendment.
That's confusing. Well, I would like to make an amendment that we will not close the shelter, and the city will take over if no operator is available in 60 days.
I would second that amendment.
Okay.
Okay. I'm trying to get your words right. Not close the shelter and will not...
And the city will take over administration if no operator is present at the end of 60 days.
I'll get you in a minute. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Close the shelter, that the amendment says we will not close the shelter, and the city will take over administration if it's over 60 days.
No operator.
No operator.
Available at the end of 60 days.
Discussion.
I think what I would like to propose, actually, is that this item be postponed until the next council meeting, pending hearing back from this other potential provider, which we would know in two weeks. And if they're not interested, then we would know if we need to, if the city will need to take over it or not by then. So, that would be my proposal, is if we've got another entity that's considering it, if they're meeting this week, and we'll know their answer two weeks from tonight, that we could take this issue up again with clean wording about 60 days and the city taking over if nobody comes forward and all of that. Maybe that's more cleaner than trying to...
I would agree.
...hash this out.
Do you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I will withdraw that motion.
Okay, and then you withdraw the second?
Yes.
Okay. So, now, you're making me wait.
Motion is to postpone for two weeks. 10, 22, 24.
There's a motion on the floor to postpone item number 19 until 10, 22, 24. Is there a second?
I have one seconded.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second to postpone this item 19 until 10, 22, 24. Discussion. Austin, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Bell.
I was going to speak before the amendment, so I'd already pushed my button, so no discussion on that right now.
Any other discussion?
Did you say everything you wanted to say? Okay.
Motion on the floor is to postpone until, postpone item number 19 until 10, 22, 24. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. No, we've had enough public comment.
Well, the rule of amendment, point of order...
Okay, you have it.
Point of orders, it's not required.
Yeah.
Well, best practice.
Okay, fine. Have a good time. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to postpone until October 22nd passes by a vote of five to three, voting against Councilmember Dixon, Councilmember Ball, and Mayor Heikala.
Thank you. All right. Item number 19 is postponed until 10, 22, 24. Next item on the, this is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do we have anybody signed up?
Start with Stephen Lett. I think Stephen left. Jenny Spurling. Diana Hutzel.
So, I want to continue the discussion on crime and...
Oh, would you give them to her, please?
Because I'm willing to tell you the whole story. I was in an house.
Do I need to wait till you pass them out?
No.
Okay. Well, actually, then we'll make sense until you see it. I'm sorry. Okay, so, Diana Hutzel, Ward 5. Information gives insight. I want to provide a full picture of the crime. So, what you see is a breakout of 32 months of consecutive NPD daily arrest log data starting from 2022 through 30 September, including housed and unhoused arrests, housed and unhoused arrest data. Over 14,500 criminal offenses, 34% by the way, are drug and alcohol related, which is about the average annually. Starting from page one, from 2022 to '23, housed offenses increased by 8.3%. During that same timeframe, unhoused offenses increased by 18.4%. This year is the end of September, housed offenses are up 1.8%, where we were this time last year, and unhoused offenses are up 21.5%. I've also included the top three areas where the majority of criminal offenses have occurred in 2024 based upon the arrest address. Housed arrestees, 32% at businesses, 32% at residences, and 30% on the roadway. Unhoused arrestees, 48% at businesses, 21% on roadway, and 14% at residences. One item on this page, consecutively, year over year, at least 30% of annual offenses committed in Norman are done so by non-Norman housed individuals who come to our town. Based upon their average age of 34 to 36, these individuals are not students. If you flip the page, this shows arrest data. From 2022 to '23, house arrests increased by 7.4%. During that same timeframe, unhoused arrests increased by 17.7%. This year is the end of September, housed arrests are up 3% from where we were at this time last year, unhoused arrests are up 19.5%. The average number of criminal offenses per housed individual so far this year is 1.7; for unhoused, it is 3.1. The average number of arrests per household, housed individual so far this year is 1.1; for unhoused, it is 1.6. Thank you.
Stephen Ellis.
Stephen Ellis, word four. I want to start by saying that I'm glad we're postponing this discussion until next time. I hope people really consider what they're doing, because it's important to see that voting no on this resolution gets you exactly the result that you want. You can still go search for somebody else to run the shelter, and you 100% ensure continuity. The idea that the city would take over during, after a short period of time and only do things for a month does not make any sense from the city's standpoint. Just take up food and shelter on their offer. You've already won. You're gonna get the kind of shelter that you want, to the extent that you go out and find someone who will do it. So if you want food and shelter out faster, go find somebody faster. That's the first thing that I want to say. The second thing that I want to say is that we've been sort of talking a lot of garbage about food and shelter today, and I want to praise them. They do a really good job. The employees of Food and Shelter, April Dozier, their director, provide excellent service to the Norman community. And what I want to suggest to you is that they are the ones who know Normans on house population better than anybody else. They're the ones who have been creating community at a friend's house. They're the ones who have really kept a lid on a lot of the difficulties that unhoused people cause housed people. And we're kind of treating them poorly in the way we've been talking about this stuff tonight. They understand that they need to treat the people that they work with as friends and not merely as numbers and not merely as clients. So when they make a judgment that they can't run a shelter under the conditions that you guys are suggesting, that should really be a red flag to you, that there's potentially a problem with the kind of questions that you're asking. They've got the expertise on this, and you guys don't. And we're not even really looking very broadly to try to figure out where the best practices are. I mean, just going to Oklahoma City is not really gonna cut it. There are lots of places in the country that do low barrier shelters in a variety of ways that work pretty well. And it's really a mark of how much hubris we've seen from the city side of this thing, that the discussion that we're having tonight is how quickly can we cut off food and shelter, and not the question of how best can we guarantee continuity of service. That's the most important thing. You should listen to...
Paul Wilson.
Paul Wilson, word one. So I'm glad we postponed it, but I guess we're kicking it down the street for a couple more weeks. I'll take the small win. I want to talk about affordable housing. I had the pleasure of driving to a larger metropolitan city this last week that's probably suffering, just like we are with housing shortages. However, they're not building large, single-family home additions. They have found a way to get developers in there to build very large apartment complexes. I'm talking huge. They're focusing on making sure everybody has a house to go to and making sure they have enough housing. We are not. I've stated it several times, that we need, I believe, what I heard earlier was 1,100 homes per year to keep up. If you do the 25-year math, or the 20-year math out to 2045, which we studied, that's a lot of houses. There's one thing we cannot get more of, and that's land. The only way we can build it is to go up. Now, we are in tornado valleys, so going up really high is not exactly feasible. It's kind of eh. But we need less large developments and more multifamily, mixed-use housing. On an acre of land, I recently discovered you can build between five and eight average-sized How many apartments can you put on an acre of lot if you go up two, three stories? Forty, 50? Because they're not that big. One- and two-bedroom apartments aren't usually that big. Now, of course, the metropolitan area I'm talking about is further south of us, and it's a lot bigger than us. But as we always say, we're Oklahoma. We can do better than Texas. Coming up this Saturday, OU-Texas. All I gotta say is, boomer sooner, horns down.
Mayumi, excuse me, Mayumi Windler.
Hello, Mayumi Windler, word two. Okay, so this summer, I mentioned something about how we pay as a city to have an animal shelter, and we take really good care of stray animals. And this whole idea of taking care of humans, we need to do better at that. I'm currently fostering three kittens, and they are almost of weight to get fixed and then adopted out, and they are gonna be amazing cats. So fostering is great. And, you know, having that facility there is a huge benefit for the city. And if we could have something like that for people, you know, a permanent thing, or if we could, you know, add more tiny homes for food and shelter, that would be really great, too. Another idea that kind of piggybacks on something that Evan said, with all the parks that we have in Norman, what if we were to put a couple of tiny homes in each of our parks and have the people living there be caretakers of the parks? Is that something that's possible? Thanks.
I think Lisa Schmidt, I think I saw her walk out. Rob Norman.
Rob Norman, word three. I agree that was the right thing to do tonight, because there are two amendments, if this contract is gonna be terminated, that are absolutely mandatory, which is, under no circumstances will the emergency shelter close. If there is no operator, the city will assume responsibility for operator of the shelter until an operator is secured. It was clear you didn't have that together tonight. And I find it kind of appalling that this came before the city council in the first place. You have staff, you have city attorneys, who I'm sure can put that language in and put it in right, and get it done in an airtight way, that's gonna protect the members of our community. But what you're doing, what some people are, not all of you, by no means, I think a majority of this council agrees with those two amendments, but there are some people treating this shelter like it's a contract fight over a commodity, and not people. Oh, 60-day ultimatum, well, let's put people on it. You know, those are the kind of things I hear in litigation over commodities. What you need to do, in the meantime, besides those two things, is you need to work on this impasse with food and shelter, and so do they. I heard out there, speaking to April, that ultimatums were given to them, but apparently we were willing for this replacement operator to kind of fudge around and tap dance and kind of give them some time. Give your flagship nonprofit the same grace. Get a mediator if you have to. I know one that will probably fix your problem, but I don't have very much confidence in you folks doing that. I could give you the one tonight, who will do it, and he will fix your problem, and he will get you guys together and make you settle this. But in the meantime, I've worked a lot with food and shelter, I've worked a lot with the Share Center. You have one of your staff members, retail marketing coordinator, director of community and business relationships, who with me, has worked with them extensively over the last two years. And quite frankly, I think it's kind of an insult to the community, the way you've treated them in the end. You need to go work on this impasse, repair this relationship, and if it doesn't work out, fine. But find a new operator, and don't close this shelter under any circumstances.
Rodney Johnson.
Okay, I'm gonna change the subject for a minute. Again, my name's Rodney Johnson. I live in Ward Two. I am a private investigator. Private investigators provide a lot of services to various businesses and individuals throughout the community. Myself, I work on child abuse cases. I work on child custody cases. I work on business fraud, and I work on other, occasionally a domestic situation, between a husband and a wife, which I, quite frankly, they're tough sometimes, let's just put it that way. But when we're throughout the communities, we work with the police department in various ways, where they know where we work and how we work. There has been a breakdown from time to time with that process. I am currently working with the director of communications, I believe, his name is Mr. Anderson, Russell Anderson, and Chief Jackson. And the police department, as of today, have been very responsive to some of those needs. I'm also a member of the Oklahoma PI Association, which is a group committed to ethical and increasing educational and ethical standards in my industry. So I want to ask the council to keep PIs and other law enforcement adjacent employers or agencies in mind, and hopefully, the city of Norman can lead the way in Oklahoma to ensure the safety and the efficient operation for the betterment of the community. And with that said, the only other thing I want to add with just what little bit of time I have left, is I think you did make the right decision tonight to postpone this vote, especially with me being from Ward Two and my council member not being here. I think this is definitely something that the entire council needs to weigh in on, and I'll definitely be contacting my council member in reference to this issue. And I implore the members of this council to show the utmost professionalism when dealing with the public. And with these problems, and I know all of you spend a lot of time working hard on issues, please show some professionalism. Thank you.
Christina Owen.
Christina Owen, words four and eight. First of all, thank you for the postponement. I do think that was the right call. I know, in some ways, it's frustrating, because you want to get the answer, and we don't want to keep coming back. And I know, especially for some people with mobility issues, you know, it can be hard to get out here, and there's frustration for that, and I understand that. But I do also think, like I said earlier, that we need more time, we need cooler heads. We have a lot of misunderstandings that need to be figured out. I mean, for instance, if one of the main points, again, was the CLEET certified security, the exact same people are working there. There was never a single day those people weren't working there. There was never not CLEET certified people working at a friend's house. And yet, so much time has been spent on something that's not even true. So I think that right there tells us, we need more time, we need cooler heads. I have heard the suggestion from both sides of this issue, that, you know, maybe we do need to have like a task force or a roundtable, something to just gather some people that have these answers, that can answer the questions you have. I hear questions from the audience and up here, "We don't know if it's successful. We don't know if this is happening." We actually do know. We have all that information. I hear people say, "They don't know who's in the shelter. It could be anybody. They can give you any name." No, we know who they are. Everything is in a system. For the entire state of Oklahoma, this information is available. You just have to know who to ask and access it. So I think if we had a task force, if we had a group of people that could sit down and give you the answers, the actual answers that you need, because unfortunately, you know, you guys, the city council and the city staff, you don't know the ins and outs. Obviously, you can't. And also, the Food and Shelter Board, as much as they do, board members don't know the ins and outs. I've been a board member of an emergency use shelter in Norman. I didn't know every single policy and ins and outs. So we don't have anybody at the table that can answer some of these questions that you have, and you need to know these answers, to have an educated conversation, to know what you're signing up for. And also, I hear a lot of people recommending things that we've done, and people just don't remember. I mean, I think Brenda and Stephen are the only two people that are here, that were here 10 years ago. People don't remember, city of Norman ran the first two temporary shelters, didn't go well. That's why they're not still doing it. That's why they wanted to find somebody else to do it. I hear people saying churches should handle it. That's the history of food and shelter. It started with McFarland Church. McFarland Church started helping the local community, and that grew, and grew, and became Food and Shelter for Friends, which then became Food and Shelter Incorporated. People don't remember the history. People don't understand we've done these things, so let's have an educated conversation, please.
Lori Swan.
First of all, I want to thank the council members for making an intelligent decision to consider this more and postpone this important vote. I think that listening to what a new vendor has to say and has to offer is an important thing to do before making a decision like this. Second of all, I want to tell you that homeless people aren't things. We aren't a blanket description. Each one of us is different. There is no such thing as the homeless lifestyle. My lifestyle is different from Judy's lifestyle. Judy's lifestyle is different from Peyton's lifestyle. Peyton's lifestyle is different from Roman's lifestyle, and the rest of them at the shelter. We each have our own hopes, dreams, problems. Some have addictions, some have mental health issues, like me. And we all need different kinds of help. There's no one solution to homelessness. There are as many solutions to homelessness as there are homeless people. So stop treating us like we're pieces on a chessboard, because we're not. And stop making blanket decisions, like homeless people. It's just as ridiculous to say homeless crime as it is to say housed people crime. You know, in the last month or so, we've had a couple of shootings by housed people. What are we gonna do about these housed people? They're out shooting people, for gosh sakes. Sounds really stupid. It's just stupid to say it about homeless people. Thank you for listening.
Michael Blanc. Michael? Yeah, your turn. Sorry, you probably couldn't hear me.
Yeah? Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Sorry, I'm tall, it's hard to bend. Okay, wow. I'm gonna admit, y'all, now that the decision's been made to postpone, which I believe was a great decision tonight, I'm glad we made that decision. Man, it's gonna be a lot easier to add my little miscellaneous comment, because it was, this is a heated issue, and it's difficult for people sometimes to express those frustrations without some of that coming over, right? But, that being said, I do hope that we are able to make some headway. I heard a while back on the radio... I heard a while back, on the radio, of all things, yeah, people still listen to the radio, crazy, right? KOSU, they're really great, helps me keep informed. Anyway, I heard Mr. Holman was interviewed there, and he had made mention, maybe like a week ago, maybe two weeks ago, of hopefully there being some progress being made with a solution finally being actually available over at the Griffin site, as a storage building that was potentially being discussed. I hope that's finally an actual option that can be explored, because, you know, everyone I've talked to, people at food and shelter, people I know who work with this community that we're trying to serve, members of our community, everyone understands, we've all been talking about this for years, we all understand, everyone here, that, you know, the situation that we've had over the current building is not perfect, right? We know that. We know that there's been lots of options, talk about potentially purchasing certain properties to find a permanent solution, and we've seen the number of different barriers to that, right? Whether someone doesn't want to sell, whether someone else doesn't think it's a good location. I've been one of the people to say that a location wouldn't be helpful, hey, that's me too, I'll admit that, right? So we all know that that's a difficult process. But that's all the more reason in my mind, that when we do get a provider who's willing to work with us as a city, despite the difficulties of that job, despite the fact that, I mean, we've been here multiple times discussing how the contract that was held with food and shelter was on a quarterly rotating basis, right? How often do you have other service providers in your town doing core services that end up having public fights like this, every three months, every six months, right? Like, this should not have been politicized the way it has been the last several years. And we all know that things got heated in the last four or five years, we know that, but this is an example of why we need to rise above that. I'm just saying, I don't hear the same kind of back and forth about, I don't know, who picks up our solid waste, right? So, but, anyway, you guys.
I don't see Russell, I think he left. Marguerite, I don't see Marguerite. Zach Letrow, I think I saw him leave as well. Floyd Carroll. Floyd, can you hear me in the lobby? He's good, okay. Cindy Pope. Cindy Pope. Evan Dunn.
All right, Evan Dunn, Ward 7. I've got some statistics, and shout out to Dan Munson, if he's watching. We have about 1,500 international students here, and these are the countries and the quantities of students from which they come. India, 237. China, 145. Iran, 93. Nigeria, 71. Bangladesh, 65. South Korea, 43. Colombia, 37. France, 36. Nepal, 34. Vietnam, 34. Pakistan, 33. Oman, 31. Mexico, 28. Eswatini, 27. Brazil, 26. Uganda, 23. Japan, 21. The UK, 20. Turkey, 19. Peru, 19. Canada, 18. Germany, 18. Zimbabwe, 18. Saudi Arabia, 17. Spain, 17. Ghana, 16. Sri Lanka, 15. Kenya, 14. Syria, Egypt, Russia, Argentina, Taiwan, Malaysia, Indonesia, Bolivia, Bosnia, Herzegovina, Italy, Angola, Cote d'Ivoire, Cameroon, Angola. If we change our policies, and we became as efficient as possible, they would all go back to their home countries with a new plan, a new way to solve these problems that are persisting. Pollution, waste, inefficiency, that's why I am as audacious, that's why I get so passionate, it's not just because I lived in China, it's not just because I'm walking the talk with food foresting. I believe that we can change. It was so hilarious, a couple of weeks ago, when they were saying, "Change is hard." Yeah, 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 it is. And I think that we all need to change our sensibilities about how we use resources, because I want that UN flag up there, you better believe that they all have different ideas about who God is. Thanks.
Sue Sanders. I don't see Joseph Ruhl. Cynthia Rogers.
I always hate to follow Evan, but I love Evan, I've known him a long time. Cindy Rogers, still Ward 4, and I have my petition with me. I was very happy that we're going to take some more time to think about the shelter situation, and think about the details of what is in that contract. And I'd like to contrast that with what's in the economic development agreement, which is the contract that the majority of you approved for the Arena Tiff project. Now, that contract would spend up to $600 million taxpayer dollars over 25 years, very long lock-in. We did not discuss that contract in detail like we did the food and shelter one. And to be fair, probably, people, and affecting people's lives is more important than just affecting our pocketbooks. But, I've been reading this contract, I only had four days on the night I had three minutes to talk about it, and there's some very interesting things that are in it and not in it. So, something that's not in it is OU Athletics' commitment of any amount of time to actually lease the facility that they're supposed to be the anchor leasing for. They are not even mentioned in it, they are not a party to the contract. I found that to be amazing, not a promise, not a plan to, not a proposal to lease, no mention at all. The University of Oklahoma is not mentioned, now OU Foundation is, by way of their development agreement. So, I also found some of the language interesting. OU Foundation's Development, UMP North LLC, proposes to facilitate the construction of, this is near wording, $650 million in stuff. But that $650 million includes the $230 million that the public is obligated to pay for because this contract was approved. Which means, for the $600 million that the public is being potentially asked to pay for, we're going to get $420 million of private, not public investment. The $1 billion, oh, well, that was mentioned as stuff the developer says could be the maximum potential development in the area. It wasn't a promise, it wasn't a proposal, it was just stuff they said in a presentation. So, I wish we could have talked about that contract a lot more, and I encourage you to look at what you all approved.
Chelsea Gravel.
Chelsea Gravel, Ward 4. Y'all are comical, like, seriously. I always know that you guys are going to do something that we're not going to expect, and it's going to be comical. I also have a feeling that in two weeks, the week of my birthday, we are going to be here until 2:00 AM, so yay for that. I also kind of think that citizens might want to start rethinking living here, if we're going to continue down this path, like, our businesses are going out, our houses are being destroyed, our counselors are lying on Facebook to people and pretending to be people they're not. It just doesn't seem like we're going in a great direction, and you guys keep making bad decisions and taking away my Tuesday night for the last two years, so, cool, yay for that. Let's talk more about some of the crimes the homeless create, because they're not shooting people most of the time, thank God, they are stabbing people, however, but they are doing things like loitering, breaking into businesses, they're attacking people. I had a man last night while I was walking, as he rode past me on the sidewalk, you know, because our sidewalks aren't actually wide enough to have a bike and a person on it, because they're supposed to be 10 feet wide for a bike. But he rode his bike at 10 o'clock at night and hit me in the back with his elbow, and what would I do about that? Oh, nothing, because what would I do about that? But, this is how the homeless population treats us housed, is with entitlement, they are frustrated, they are upset, they choose this lifestyle. And because our resource providers publicize that food and shelter is here, and food and shelter has resources, and Salvation Army has resources, that they can come here and get those resources. And a town that has resources is more open and welcoming and kind to homeless people. So they think that they can come here, and we'll be welcoming and kind, and they'll have their shopping carts rusting and costing us $25,000 because they clog up our drainways. But no, we're not normal homeless people, like we've heard from out here, who are wanting to get better, who are wanting a better life, who want to get back in to public society and behave. No, these are people who have warrants out for their arrest and are wanting to hurt and attack people, they have long lengthy careers, criminal careers on OSN, that take up every county in Oklahoma. They are not your typical, they're not your father, your mother, your brother, your sister, these are very dangerous individuals, and your choices are allowing them to be here. So maybe citizens like myself need to start making other plans to no longer be here to support you.
Carlinda Gravel.
Carlinda Gravel, Ward 4. So, I would like to take a moment to share a couple of things, once again on Facebook. So, one of the staff at the shelter, some information come to light based on the, can you, okay, based on this meeting coming up, that was trying to actually set the record straight, but instead told us that there is quite hundreds of incidents of the people inside the shelter getting in screaming matches. Although they don't always escalate to police officers, that there's hundreds of incidences where there's screaming matches occurring inside the shelter that could easily escalate to law enforcement. So that was news, the ones that do escalate to law enforcement usually are around refusing to leave the property. We also have someone, a council member, who had reached out to City Care and spoke to Alina "I can't find where," quote, "I found that other info." She said that they have security guards with tasers, a cop, a walk-through metal detector, security cameras, and they will lock up knives, etc., but they destroy drugs. Is this a low-barrier shelter? I just don't understand it enough. If that is in fact a low-barrier shelter, to have that kind of restriction, I was wondering, as we move forward to look for a new operator, I don't know if you're aware of this, but Ms. Dossier's experience in operating a shelter was operating a shelter that was women of domestic violence. It was a tiny shelter in Chickasha, that was the experience that she brought to the table when she was hired as the operator of this mixed-gender, low-barrier, no-barrier shelter. She had actually, a very tiny, whole, Bodunk Town, Chickasha, a very tiny women's shelter, and that was her experience. So, what are we going to be looking for in experience of an operator? Are we going to be looking for someone that has more experience than that? Because I think that's probably what part of this issue, how this came about, is we didn't hire someone that had appropriate knowledge and experience to be operating a low-barrier shelter. So that's what I would kind of maybe put my two cents in. I'd also suggest that, like Anthony had mentioned earlier, that Comanche and Webster had wanding, so hopefully, we can learn from our past experience at shelters. I know the Webster Shelter actually got their $38,000 funding from our police budget. Can you believe that? $38,000 was taken out of our police officers to fund that shelter, and our police officers are already short-staffed. Why in the world did we do that? Hopefully, we can learn from that moving forward as well, and not take budgets from our valuable police officers. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann.
Cheryl Ann Denso, Wards 4 and 6. Well, it's been an interesting evening, and I want to thank you for listening to everybody, including the hecklers. I'm disappointed that we're, again, kicking this down the road. It seems that decisions are really hard for y'all to make. And all along, I've been saying for a long, long time that you need to have a more comprehensive plan. And as far as people talking about commodities, the current providers look at the population that we're discussing as a commodity, because their funding comes directly from the community development block grants and the community service block grants, okay? And it's a numbers game, folks, okay? The more services you provide, the more people you have under house, the more meals you provide, the more folks you so-called help when we're really not providing the help that they really need, the more money they get. That's the game of the vendor. I'm telling you this because it comes directly from the State Commerce Department through those federal dollars, okay? I've been trying to explain that to you for a long time, okay? The auditor is correct in her assessment. Thank God for the auditor we have in place. Y'all need to listen to the people who have the knowledge and the skill to do the deep dive into the amount of corruption that's going on. Thank you.
Counsel, we are adjourned.